Greetings, ladies and gentlemen, those that are in the audience and those that are watching this live stream. We have returned to closed session. We're back in the open session. You have for Tim Dr. McCray, you got a statement of relief?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to enter back into, to enter out of closed session. And I would also make, like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to inform the property owners to file 770, Lady Lane Road, in writing that we, the Town of Hope Mills, would like to withdraw our offer.
We have a motion, we have a second. The motion is to authorize the town manager to withdraw the offer at the address on Lady Lane, that these are previous board approved. Is that it? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, the motion carries. All right, we move on to priorities presentation under item two. Chancellor, lead us off.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and, um, I would like to welcome everybody here tonight to the Town of Hope Mills Department Head Budget, 2025 priorities.
Chancellor, hold, hold one minute. I have a point of order that we didn't finish the rest of the closed session.
Mr. Mayor, we also like to move to seal the minutes of the closed session. For such time, it's the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session.
Thank you. Now we got it. All right.
Um, again, I'd like to welcome everybody to the 2025 priorities department head budget meeting. Um, and as the mayor spoke about success, uh, vision, much growth, plus engagement, deep participation. First step to success is knowing your priorities. And so, as we go forward, I would like to, um, highlight something that we talked about last year. What is a priority? Um, it's a fact or condition of being regarded or treated as more important. It's a thing that's regarded as more important than others, and it's the life you take. A president will want to proceed before others. In terms of continued progression, uh, mayor spoke about this new approach and its pay dividends last year. Uh, this is a new approach to be adopted. Um, and it provided our department, uh, this opportunity to present that budget for all these for that approach this year. But it placed our leadership in a unique position to have the ability to guide the future growth and development of our town in a way they have never been done before. Uh, and again, this is probably, um, one of our, we're coming out of, uh, one of our most successful years. Uh, in Hope Mills, what you'll also see is that, as the department heads present, they'll briefly discuss, uh, some of the things that they aren't bringing back to you this year because we accomplished them last year through this process. So from the administration side, uh, the administration consists of myself, um, town clerk Ashley Wyatt, deputy town clerk, public administration officer, assistant for our, for our plate, and our sepsis that we put in place as a recommendation with Commissioner Marley's last year of priority dinner. From the administration side, um, we, we have four, um, or three from the manager's side. And now transition to our Ashley, um, after our defense, but from the manager's side, um, my three priorities are legislative, and I'm gonna continue to push the four-year staggered term. It's something that I think builds the continuity there, um, because if I ask the record talks about bond, if we're in a competitive nature, it's the continuity and stability that's brought to the town. Uh, we've asked to explore options of researching other municipalities and how many of our, 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 actually have four-year staggered terms. So that remains one of my priorities. Uh, branding, I do think that it, uh, we, we created a more robust branding campaign that allows it to create an identity. Um, we redesigned our website last year, but I feel, uh, that there's still a need for a cohesive, a cohesive approach that not only tell our story, but creating a completely new approach and brand in the town. Uh, some of those efforts could include a branding consultant, um, a podcast, um, in terms of that allows us to have a radio presence. Um, and an expansion of the engagement platform. Um, my third priority would be town hall expansion as we continue to see requests for additional staff. Um, any staff, uh, requests that you see coming from department heads within town hall. I think we currently have, I say two makeshift offices, I mean, but it's the only two spots we have left, um, for, um, additional staff. And so if we get four departments to bring in additional staff, we do, we actually are at that point where we need to access. Well, we talked about it last year. I think we're gonna start to see, we'll give you guys some numbers. From the clerk's side, um, I'll just go into, okay. Um, I'll just present, um, the clubs we should automate optimizing operations. Um, the priorities are a legal review, which is municipal, um, elections. This, this is an election year, so typically, um, our park select facility is utilized as a polling station. Increased travel and training budget, continued grant services, and administrative assistance and brand ambassador. So in terms of legal review, um, the advantages and benefits of a municipal system can help local governments tremendously. Uh, for co-hosting, um, to, uh, code avoidance online, being, uh, free expression online and public archives. Codification, which consolidates legislation. If you recall, we just did two massive updates to our zoning ordinance. Uh, it's what is called enforcement. It does need to be codified. Uh, the election, again, in odd years, Town of Hope Mills Park Center, um, services, sort of, the polling station. Increased travel and training budget. You're gonna see a request to not only increase, um, administrative staff's budget, but to also increase your training budget as well. Uh, I think, uh, us coming off of the NLC, um, conference, um, where it did feel good to have more electric features there. And so you'll see a slight increase or request to increase your budget as well. Um, grant services. The town currently sits at over six million dollars in grants submissions. Rude against CLM technical assistance program. Um, it is still representing dividends from that thirty thousand. The first thirty thousand, recall, we received at no charge. We additionally paid another thirty, but we're actually repeating that. And so you'll see us request, not necessarily in next year's budget. You'll see us probably request additional thirty thousand now to get us through to, uh, July. But we're sitting at about six million dollars in grants submissions off of just the thirty thousand dollars that we made so far. Um, you're also gonna see us explore options, and I think we're here. Um, I think we're at a position where we have a system in place where we may want to entertain our full-time grants administrator on staff. And so for the staff or the salary you give to that, I think you'll see the long-term, um, perspective. There's more bang for your buck, because now you have handhouse grant writer, um, and this, uh, whole staff. Um, additional staff, again, you're, you're looking at the administrative assistance request. My deputy clerk actually, uh, remains in three roles. Um, that administrative assistant could also serve as a dual role with the grants, uh, with the, uh, brand ambassador, which allows our town clerk to, um, remain as a PIO and deputy clerk. So with that said, the, um, total request would be the legal review is ten thousand, elections fifteen. We have to pay that anyway. Um, travel and training budget, you're asking, we're asking for twenty-five thousand for commissions, eighteen thousand for admin. The grant services, which is the addition of thirty-five, we're asking for now. The grants administrator salary, we're estimating that at about seventy-five thousand. And the brand ambassador, um, admin position would be about fifty-five thousand for total two hundred and thirty-three. Um, and that would conclude the administrative priorities, and we'd like to open the floor to any discussions that you have.
As we go through the discussion of all the departments, the way that the rules would go is that department head, just like chancellor, will brief the entire department slides, and then board will have the opportunity to ask questions after the complete briefing of this department.
And I will say before Commissioner Schröder comes in, what you'll see overall, some of the department presentations will pretty much roll right into just regular budget requests, but there's some that are so high that it does require some engagement of the board to make it a priority. And so some of the things you'll see is just general staff requests. It may not be something that rises to that level, but it may be something that will be to that level. But we at least want you to know exactly what those priorities are.
Commissioner Schröder?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so my one question concern would be for the elections, because I know it's a pain and a bug, especially for when we're running for office, that we have so many different stations where citizens don't even know, like the, the, the fire department, the cotton fire department is going out there where, uh, in, um, Lighthouse or, 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 maybe, run. Lighthouse, um, the church cotton fire station, they even use John Griffin, I think, is one. Humbling Mills, they have these, like, real, they're really tiny, but they're still places that our citizens can go vote if they're precinct, but you get really small members, but they are places that people vote. You really got people all over the place.
So is there a way, because their, their numbers are so small, I mean, there are, I think, what, less than a hundred? Less than a hundred. Can we get rid of those and just have them go to the, you know, the rec center, the middle school? What's, what's another one?
Seaway Mall.
Yeah, Seaway Mall.
I think, uh, if I was to speak for our clerk, the board of elections drives all of that. So fifteen thousand is just us paying them to be able to use our facility. I think we can talk to them to explore and let them know about the turn we have about what sounds like saturated precincts. Uh, but that's something that they would ultimately have to do. I'm not sure how much authority we have, but that's something we can have.
Because I know they would take inputs, especially since it, uh, it's a hassle, especially we have to run to all those different locations. Um,
And I think the topic is not a, that's a, that's a.
We, we can add. Yes, please, can you please follow up with that?
Yeah, I can do it.
That's the only question.
It, it may be something that we, as the elect, if we could have drive too for the board of elections. And then the other question, I guess we can go along with that, is are they gonna put another, uh, early voting site out here in Hope Mills? We did the last time. It was only click your hole in board of elections for all these people out here in Hope Mills. So I would like to see if they're gonna bring another voting site, early voting site back here, at least at Parks and Rec, or even down in Graves Creek, but, um, that's a, and I think Spring Lake had that conversation, went and brought a site back down there for them. But I, I think what it's being mistaken largest in the county, we should have a, a early voting site.
I, 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 well, I'm trying to follow, but that's definitely something that we can engage and let you go.
Let me ask you a question. If, if we were voting in the even, even years, would we have to pay the fifteen thousand?
I think we're turning it just because it's being utilized in our building. I think the conversation about even years is rooted in the fact that you get more turnout in even, uh, the election years than you do in odd years. But I think we have to pay either way if they got it wrong.
So the only other question I have here is, we're gonna, we're paying the fifteen thousand anyway. We're probably gonna, we're still paying the grant services thirty-five, right?
That's asking you for another thirty-five to get us to, through to July. Um, and I wanna make the announcement that I can't. Actually, I'm frozen up if I do, but, um, we are still reuniting itself this program. I do think we're getting to a threshold where continuing to pay the additional thirty-fives, you don't get to the point where you spend more than seven thousand a year. And if you have a permanent staff member, that permanent, if you recall, we created, we found out about this program because we were exploring trying to create grant fee. And so I do think that all the departments are engaged. I do think it would benefit us. But I think it's time to at least talk about getting us to July through this service and then bringing some more staff. It would permanently be dedicated specifically toward pursuing, um, non-attorney in this, um, ministry grant program.
What does the legal review look like for ten thousand?
So the legal review, if you recall, um, at one of our recent board of commissioner meetings. Can you hear me? Okay. So the legal review consists of, um, municipal, who was our repository for all of our code of ordinances, taking any of our recent text amendments and incorporating that into the code. So we have to pay them in order to do that, but they make sure, um, that everything is cohesive because the code exists. But whenever we make text amendments, they have to incorporate that into our current code. So that takes about six to eight months for them to do. And so the estimate includes that and the supplement for us to get the hard copy to also do the same thing with the, the hard books.
Ashley, when was the last time this was updated?
So the last time that the town has had a recodification was in twenty nineteen, and that is a full review of the code. Municipal doesn't suggest doing that more or sooner than every ten years. So we're not in a position right now to do that, but as far as I know, the town has not had a legal review since then or before then. They've done recodifications, but not, um, a legal review.
So this one would be a comprehensive legal review?
It would just be from the time that the town has last given them text supplements to incorporate into the code, and that was October of twenty twenty-two. So what I did was ask all of the departments to give me any amendments that they've had from, or to the code from that point until present. And so that is what will be incorporated into the code throughout the legal review. So the recodification is the entire code. The legal review is only addressing things that have actually been updated in real time.
So the legal review is ten, so what's the price for the whole thing?
So I didn't inquire about that because municipal doesn't suggest doing that sooner than every ten years. And we last had it in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, yeah, right. Okay, uh, Commissioner Gray?
Um, I'd like to go back into legislating, the four-year staggered term. First of all, I'm sort of confused why that would even fall under administration, why administration would even recommend that we go that direction when the board makes policy. Now, this has gone on every two years, uh, that this has come up. We put it on the ballot six years ago, I guess it's when it was. And it was voted down by almost three thousand people. Um, then, two years later, it came back up and the board voted it down. Uh, on March the sixth, I think, uh, two thousand twenty-three, it was brought back up. And this board, with exception of me, voted it down again. So I would think that if the board wanted to pursue that option, we would put it on the agenda. We would discuss it and we would vote on it, whether to put it back on the ballot or if we would vote on it for us to pass it. I really don't think any department should be recommending us to go to four-year staggered terms.
Um, I respond to that. That's actually my recognition. Um, and as we proceed forward, when we continue to engage with this staff, we continue to hear about how difficult it is to create a system or continuity when you have a situation where the entire board can be on holiday for two years. We are talking about doing a long range, a long, a strategic plan. We're talking about growth and future development. A lot of times, even like I said, with the bond referendum, you have to have a certain amount of stability there to be able to have success in moving these things forward. This is just me keeping it on the burner to make you realize that it is something that we should explore. The other, the option is always gonna remain with the elected. But as manager, I'm gonna continue to push and suggest things that I feel that are important for the long-range, um, success of the town.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, moving on. Next, you have human resources.
As you know, and I have to equal and we're gonna continue to hear throughout the night, the town has seen unprecedented growth. As a result, the town found necessary to grow staff in order to maintain appropriate levels of service to our staff affairs. The most recent example of this was in the police department, the addition of a government to OTP and SROs. But who supports our staff? Human resources. From recruitment to retirement, human resources plays a significant role in employee engagement, retention, and overall job satisfaction. According to SHRM, the Society for Human Resource Management, the sweet spot is one and a half to four and a half HR professionals per one hundred employees, with twenty twenty-two average being one point seven. The town is currently at two hundred and six employees, that includes full-time, part-time, seasonal, and auxiliary staff. Since April first, when I began working here, we've added forty full-time and twenty part-time. Um, for the town, with that measurement, we would equate to three point two to three point five HR team members. While we have a very capable team in place, we're not magician. And most of our days are bogged down with paperwork that is often redundant and at times very unconserving. A solution to this would be to invest in an HR management software in addition to adding an additional person to our team. This investment will not only allow my team to work more effectively, but it'll also allow us to communicate with staff, decrease payroll processing times, and reduce errors. Additionally, this will also allow my team to focus on the town's priorities when it comes to mental health, professional development, faculty appreciation, and engagement, all of which will directly impact our retention rates. In conclusion, with the addition of one more full-time HR member and investment in a human resource information system, our processes will become more efficient, more accurate, and the HR department can better manage our staff and work on morale satisfaction, which turns benefits of our community as a whole.
Okay, board, any questions? Uh? I've got one, so go ahead. Yours and mine. When we look at, um, the information system, I remember some years ago that we transitioned to NeoGo. Are we still using NeoGo?
So currently NeoGo supports our recruitment effort, but it's really only one piece of a larger, what an HR system is, that only focuses on our recruitment effort and staff. Um, my recommendations that I'm getting hopes for now will be to replace that, um, with a more broad system. So instead of using NeoGo and our employee navigator for benefits, it would be in one system that would, um, ideally integrate with clients who manage, like, they will, and it would need to work with their accounting software as well.
If you were to go to this other system, as far as the training piece, town employees could access the training based on the offices on their own computers.
Correct. And the actual third, um, thing that I did mention, but is the technology piece. I would like to have some training laptops available, not all of our employees have our computers. Um, that if we're onboarding, we'd be able to have some set up in a conference room where we could get all the paperwork done electronically. Because ideally, we wouldn't need paper. We would be able to process everything electronically, keep it in one database. There's actually quite a few current systems that we're paying for that would be encompassed in this broader software.
Interesting, okay. That would be more efficient and effective.
Absolutely.
I'm sure. Okay. Commissioner Schröder?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have a price tag for the HRIS?
I'm, I'm waiting on some quotes. I have two right now.
Just football players?
Oh, well, they're very different. That's the tricky part. One, one's a, um, recurring cost of fifty thousand dollars a year. It's about twenty-four or twenty-five dollars per employee from them. Um, so that's a higher estimate. I think I told them two hundred is just kind of like a consistent number. Obviously, that number fluctuates through the year. Um, and then the other one, which is actually to see what we would get with NeoGo, to see if we could continue using that software, and their quote came in at almost a hundred thousand dollars. So I'm waiting on the third one, which is Tyler Technology, what we use for our finance. So I'm trying to see what, what the options are. I have a call with that.
Okay. Um, I agree with the laptops. Um, and those, I mean, we don't have to get top of the line gaming computers. We can get, you know, I mean, that shouldn't be a very expensive piece, just to get a couple of laptops and maybe two of any conference room or something. So that's my, my, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Schröder. I wanna back up and touch on something that we really hit it out of the park last year. And I'm gonna tell you what that is. Commissioner Marley was behind it. It was the addition of our receptionists. How beneficial have those two dedicated ladies been, not only to the citizens who walked through that front door, but to the staff? And just think about adding those positions and how that's enhanced the operation effectiveness and efficiency with everybody that, that works in that building. That's, we've done a lot of great things over the year, but I'm gonna say that was one that we have really hit it out of the park with. So I just wanted to, to comment there, uh, that, uh, that that was really a great idea from Commissioner Marley, because she was behind that last year. And those two ladies are phenomenal. Uh, they care about the staff, they care about the citizens, and they're not there to make money. They really aren't. They're passionate about what they do. Anyway, that's enough on that one?
I, I do have one comment. My, my, my only comment is, like I've always said, you can't continue to grow your town and not grow your staff. So I think some of these staff positions you've been putting off all the years I've been with the board, some of them, without being in a capacity to include yours. So I just believe you can't keep growing and not grow your staff.
We've learned that. Beth?
I don't know if I'm a lot, I'm not talking to the microphone. Do you all hear me? Okay, so, um, Chancellor had recommended, um, going through some of the stuff that we had, uh, completed in previous cycle. And I know last year, um, we came to you guys not with any major request, um, just that we were going to, um, hold on to some funding for emergency purposes, kind of build up the stormwater fund, which, um, we've been able to do. And I think we're gonna continue to, um, lean in that direction this year. But we were still able to get our cleaning completed that we requested last year. Um, we've seen lots of, uh, improvements to the drainage during these heavy rain events. And it remains to prove, you know, positive benefits to neighborhoods that we have traditionally seen localized flooding in. So, um, that's obviously gonna be a repeated request from my department this year. Um, I would, and always do remind you guys that, um, our directives and the things that we are responsible for doing are basically required by the federal government and then pushed down through the state. Um, so last year, we requested to update the stormer ordinance and also our master plan because it was a little over ten years old and they recommend that, you know, ten years is, is extensive. So, um, we were able to complete the stormer ordinance update. Um, we did a complete update of the stormer ordinance to some help from, um, consulting firm that basically that individual had worked for the state retired, and so, um, she was a very valuable resource to us. Um, the master plan update is completed. We're still going through that. Um, so it has not been published yet, but, um, that was a, it's like a six hundred page document that, that needed to be updated. And, uh, that comes with a lot of additional work. Um, with the stormer ordinance updates, we also did some internal, our reinforcement policies and procedures were updated as well. We have a lot of different forms that we were using, um, and it seemed like they were excessive amounts of forms. So we have consolidated those and also consolidated some of the processes. One of the other things we requested was, um, you know, to, to give, allowed focus on outfall maintenance, which we did. Um, we have identified areas that needed to be. We have identified areas that needed to be maintained in some sort of way, then realized that we really didn't have the proper equipment to do that. So obviously, we can go use a contractor, which we did, but found it to be costly. So you're going to hear that in my next portion of this field. In this upcoming fiscal cycle, we would like to focus on updating our GIS database. That is a requirement for our NDES permit. That mapping is done by folks that are much smarter than me. They go out, we have the ability to allow them to use as-bills that we get from local developments. That does not apply to, it does to the neighborhoods and things like that. I think we've come to the end of finding things that were not mapped from years ago or little pocket areas that we don't have mapping. That map is basically our stormwater drainage infrastructure, so all the piping and all the inlets are mapped, and we update that. We were on kind of a two-year rotation, but with the amount of growth that we've had in the last two years, we have a very long list of updates that are needed, and that cost has gone up so significantly that I screamed in the office, I'm sure everybody heard me, I was like, there's no way, that's not what we paid, but...
I heard you too, Beth.
I'm sure you did. But we were going to have to kind of chip away at that. You know, the master plan update, the storm ordinance update, those things are expensive to do the whole thing at one time. We just have been kind of asking around to find out how we could better collect as-bills to be able to use those without having to send a field crew out to redo anything. That way, it's more of a digital exchange, and I think we've gotten to the point that our standards and specs, along with the processes that we use for infrastructure inspection and acceptance, those things we're able to turn into somebody, and it's a digital exchange rather than having boots on the ground from, you know, somewhere else. So we're going to be focused on getting those updated because we are required to keep them updated. And three of the things that we're going to focus on this year, obviously, I'm still pitching that $100,000 that we're going to budget for, for cleaning the drainage system because we have talked about possibly getting a truck and the cost of the truck and then needing another employee, and we just don't feel like the maintenance of that vehicle is just easiest for us to use a contract service to do that. With our outfall maintenance and identifying the areas, we have, we have a list of things, and we did some contract work. It was extremely costly. So this year, in our budget, we are going to be asking to basically upgrade the MiniX. It will be still a MiniX, but it will have a ballistic cab on it, and we've gotten quotes for getting a mulching head along with the bucket. So we would be able to go in, trim these easements, cut everything back in-house rather than having to contract that out. It'll be dual-use as far as picking up things. Tyler pointed out to me today that the MiniX we have is great, but some of the materials that we need to replace, the slabs that go on top of these things, they are too heavy for the equipment to pick up, so there's no way to safely do that. We have to call somebody else in to pick it up, or we've got to borrow a couple of work staff and use two pieces of equipment. So our thought was, we sell one and then put that money towards the purchase of a newer one. That piece of equipment is about eight years old, and it's in, I think, very good shape. We haven't overused it or amused it at all, so I think we can probably get back a good majority of our money. And then the last thing that is on my list every year is we have projects that we work with, mainly public works and parks and rec, because those are the areas that we can kind of fit stormwater into. Don and I are in discussions about a piece of equipment that they need, which I'm sure he's going to bring up during his part of the presentation. And I think last year, we briefly discussed the parking lot over behind the park. I think LaMarco is in agreement that we want to go ahead and budget for at least the engineering of that in the next fiscal cycle. And I will remind you that we're not asking for anything above and beyond what is already in the stormwater budget. Those are all items that can be covered in our annual budget. Does anyone have any questions?
I was going to remark on that one comment that was on that slide. That one, that one line where it says, "The equipment expands our abilities for in-house work across multiple departments with estimated purchase cost of $150,000." Is this a piece of equipment you're talking about?
Yes, that would be the mini excavator that we have gotten a few quotes, and it appears that that would cover it along with the mulching head, and then whatever we can get from the sale of the one that currently have would be put towards, back in the fund towards the purchase of the newer one.
This would, this would come out of stormwater budget?
Yes, sir.
But it would be, but Don would be able to use it?
Absolutely. We try to purchase things that are usable across departments. I was just telling LaMarco that, you know, this is something, the backside of Heritage Park is a wooded area. Our maintenance staff goes out there with weed eaters and chainsaws and very labor-intensive equipment, and it takes days to get that cleaned up. This piece of equipment can be dropped off on a trailer and done in two to three hours. Everything is mulched up. If we choose to pick it up, then we can. If we choose to leave it on the ground, it's unnatural, so...
Okay.
And if the fire department and police department decide they need to use it for something, they're welcome to it as well.
So that's kind of into our community piece of equipment.
Well, we, we, stormwater, stormwater likes the teamwork effort, and we like to purchase things that a good majority of us can use, or at least two or three departments can all use, because we, it's not something that we would use every day. But if we're using it amongst the different departments, it comes in handy.
It would be a layoff.
Yes, sir.
That's funny.
Well, Don doesn't know it yet, but when we replace it, it's still going back in one of his buildings, so we don't have a stormwater building to put it in. I don't think it'll fit in the back of town hall.
Well, then would be the price of using the equipment, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir.
One hand, what's the standard?
Everything comes at price.
One hand washes the other.
That's right.
Commissioner Swol.
Now, did you say it has a ballistic cab?
So I am, I am told, when we were doing the research, I said, why can't we just buy a mulching head for the mini excavator? And then I got laughed at. Oh, you have to have ballistic cab on it. I said, well, who's shooting at you?
Have to have been the whole knows.
Yeah. I hear you. But the, so it is a requirement, I think, by OSHA for there to be a ballistic cab because that cab is, it's shooting stuff, and it's just like safety gear for weed eating, but this is at a much higher rate that things could be thrown.
And I was concerned, I'm like, if citizens taking pot shots, like, you haven't cleaned my drains yet, you're going to pay, so, okay.
I'm waiting on it. It hasn't happened yet, but this way we'll be covered.
Okay. Very good, very good. That's all I have in there.
Any other comments from the board? Okay.
Thank you.
Well... Emily?
I have a basic list of a little bit of what we've accomplished in the last year and started to. I cannot remember off the top of my head, but we've done over 300 square acres, 327 acres of annexation in the last handful of years, and talk about growth for the town. We did, as you know, change up the code enforcement codes that's also going to go in the meeting, but it's actually mentioned, that'll be part of the certification process. One of my code enforcement officers just got her Level 1 building certification last week, so congratulations to her. Our, so we do not have a town planner anymore, but while he is guaranteed a lot of improvements for the department, including streamlining code enforcement in the processes of doing inspections, while we try to work on getting software to better organize their inspection. He created infographics that I will be putting on the website in the future, explaining different processes. We actually have them in the back of the commission room at this time, where people can actually pick one up physically to take with them. We also reactivated, I called the wrong word, the historic overlay district ordinance, and I'll be adding up to our website for that as well, to benefit information purposes. And I'm also in the process of finishing out of the zoning and subdivision ordinance. So part of my priorities list talks about adding an additional zoning slash code enforcement officer to the roster. At the planning departments, we try to include the comprehensive amendments to zoning and subdivision ordinances, there's a need for code enforcement officers dedicated specifically to commercial developments and enforcing the zoning ordinance. With the changes to the code enforcement code as well into zoning ordinances, it's going to give our code enforcement officers more power to enforce the zoning ordinances while they're out doing their regular inspections and patrolings. Along with adding a zoning slash code enforcement officer, we would need a new vehicle, and of course, training is always needed. We're always looking to better ourselves. Software, as I mentioned earlier, we are looking to try to get software for our code enforcement officers, so they can better record their inspections and keep a better record down the line for inspections done. It would be attaching pictures from said inspections, so we'd keep a record of letters sent, invoices that would need to be generated for properties cleaned up. And then for the zoning and planning, we're looking to hopefully have a fully-staffed planning department and possibly add an additional planner. As mentioned, we have over 300 acres of additional annexation. Not to mention, we have more coming in the future for requested annexations. Over the next year, my priorities also include finishing out the updating zoning subdivision ordinance and adding the name of each OP, historic overlay district information to the website. I'm in the process of overhauling my sections of the website, which is a process in itself. We also look forward to working with Cumberland County to update the land use ordinance. I believe they gave us an estimate, it should be updated, chances they say it's by the end of this year, but they ended next year.
This actually speaks to the video that we're talking about on our level committees today. The county basically told us it would be the end of next year before they could get to our section. Being proactive, they told us to hire a consultant. That's been left on. I think it's a more proactive approach, and we're going to assign that to our economic committee that consists of everybody that would be considered a stakeholder in the area of every agency around, and we're going to actually conduct that ourselves in-house. And I do think it saves a ton of money. Commonwealth County joint on planning board representative and Long Beach planning department are part of that committee as well, so I think that's the better approach. And I think we did faster than, because they're not going to get to it until the end of next year, and you're probably looking at the end of the following year before it's completed. So I think that's something we can do much faster than we can do it from the job seat from its internal, probably, in the whole.
That's pretty much it. Any questions?
Emily, are we actively advertising for the vacant planning position now?
Yes, it closes that deal much.
Okay. So you're looking for, you were asking for additional zoning and code enforcement officer, a new vehicle, and another planner?
Yes.
To work with, to do a vacant one, so that's two, two planning positions?
Yes, yes.
Okay. What's the estimated software cost?
I'm not sure at this time. I have several quotes that I'm waiting to get, and I'm hoping to have them ready. I actually have a demonstration scheduled for tomorrow morning, and supposedly they should have a quote to meet in the next few days, so I can get a pile together of quotes hopefully next week.
What software are they currently using?
None.
None?
That's none.
All right.
Yeah. Everything's basically done on hand right now.
Okay.
I'll probably have a question for everyone. For this code enforcement officer for commercial developments now, that assists in getting up these areas, like Walgreens area, that filthy, filthy intersection, code enforcement will be able to find them for that kind of stuff?
So the idea, hope, I guess, is for them to focus on commercial properties from, everything from making sure their landscaping is correct. You know, you know, some of that, like, there's some dying trees that need to be replaced. Well, the idea is to give them the power to go after that part as well as making sure that they are clean, like, they're clean today.
Yeah. So I'm sure that's something that we should support behind, just saying. Thank you.
I'd like to see something done with that hill at Walgreens. We need to make that not only a goal, but it needs to be a mission to do something with that hill. It is the ugliest hill that I have ever seen, and it's part of our gateway. Everything else in a town looks really great, but when you come up to that hill and you see the trash, the growth, all of it down the side of that hill, it just, the sense of wrong impression just clearly goes. Anything else?
Ask a question?
Sir, go ahead.
I'm ready. I've been making that go from that back, or we know that.
It's probably home to be a two right now, but this position allows us to act a bit more aggressive and actually pursue them.
Do they pay us back for that?
No, that's also tied to the accurate program that we got where if we somehow notice a violation, if they don't respond, if they don't comply, we have to get it out, so that we can get ourselves, we can keep the money to collect.
Um, that thing.
I don't know if it actually, we quantified how long the key and the win was that prior to that, the only thing we wish to lean on is, now, with this program we have, we can be act a little bit more aggressive, because it's through actual collecting. I think we just approved the MOU at the last meeting for our finance department to have the authorization to do that. So that's what we just recently brought with, it gives us a really one key to code enforcement. The commercial position is now you have a one staff member specifically dedicated to just commercial, so those are the problems that we do.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Moving on to the other side of the table. It's all you, Kenny.
All right, thank you, sir. So far as the special department goes, my list is short, to a point. I have a staff of six, including myself. I have two private techs and three inspectors, and me and the chief inspector. We are very, with the positive incentives I have in place, we're very proactive and efficient in what we do. I, my biggest, I guess my biggest feat in my department is I want the highest and best use of my people, and that means their time, and their ability, and their skill sets. So with that being said, we don't, we're not asking for a lot. This year, I would like to get a new vehicle. We have a 2000 F-150 that Ray drives, needs to see better days, it passed down two or three times in stormwater to us. It passed down two or three times to Stormwater to us, and it's been around the block. And it costs, it cost, it cost, it cost about seventy to eighty dollars a week to put gas in that thing. And my other three vehicles combined, I've, I've got a way from pickup trucks that got more to like the Ford Escapes and Nissan Pathfinder, more than many SUVs with all-wheel drive that can be off on job sites. I can do all three of those vehicles for seventy dollars a week, whereas I got one that took me seventy or eighty. And so, and it is like, it's like riding a horse and bug. It's, I really need to have a replacement, more efficient vehicle. And I'm not asking for any new, uh, staff this year. Uh, like I say, uh, that's probably coming up in the following budget this year. I think I'm good. Uh, like I say, with the positive procedures and places, and procedures and possibly having a place in the department, we're getting the highest and best use of the staff. Um, there's a couple of line item increases that I want to, I really need, uh, our department supplies needs to go from four to six thousand dollars. But as we're doing more permitting, we're using more, more papers and more of all that stuff. So we, we got, we got to increase that. Uh, I'm, I'm averaging about two and three ink carches a month, and that ninety dollars a hundred dollar a pop. Uh, what people realize, when somebody emails us, say, for example, a solar panel, uh, you know, to put solar panels in houses, right? They email that permit package to you, it's about forty-five sheets. We've got to print out just that one permit. And it's all specs and it gives us everything. So if you do ten of those a day, you're going through it, you know? So, uh, and the other one's the training. I like to go from thirteen five, uh, fourteen thousand. That's only five on each free. So the reason why thirteen five this year, because I got a lot of new code books called a new code change, which I obviously, uh, more climate adopted, uh, two thousand twenty-four building, because they're effective July one this year. And so the code books are not in print yet. They're telling us they're gonna probably be in print in February or March, so that way I can get those new code books. I like to keep that money in the book for training calls. And the inspectors, we've got two juniors inspectors. I got one that's got always level one, they've got another one that has all professional ones. But they have to keep renewing, getting to higher levels so they can go forward and further their career development, professional development, and for the town, too, because, uh, the more levels they have, the more certification they have, the more they can expect. They're not, they're not just taking home the one thing. But, uh, I like to keep that training at that point. And this training will get more and more expensive every year, it seems like. Uh, it, it sends a person to a class, say a level one or level two class, it's fifty-two week, Friday, Saturday, Sunday at community college. You have to pay for registration, hotel, you get the food and dinner. Uh, I actually let it drive the town vehicles so we save more mileage, you know? And, and it pops in worth of twelve, twelve dollars per class, so. And you send somebody to five or seven classes, your whole team, that's not counting our county that were mandated to do every year. So, so I, I'm gonna need to keep that at that. And I like to increase the maintenance repair line of vehicles from two thousand thirty-five hundred. The three vehicles we have, uh, we have a two thousand twenty Ford Escape, a two thousand twenty Nissan Pathfinder, and a two thousand twenty-two Jeep Charity. They're not even working anymore. So, uh, when they need new tires, I just put two sets of tires on the, on the Jeep and the, on the Cherokee on the Pathfinder and the Ford Escape. I just put these two sets of tires, so I can pass the inspection. So, uh, it, it eases it up quick, you know? So they're in good shape. Uh, the inspectors take good care of them, wash them, we keep it clean. That's like I tell them, we don't, we might be inspectors, but we don't have the right garbage man from the district inspector. We, we gotta keep our vehicles looking sharp. And I just want to tell you a quick snapshot of where we're at right now for the fiscal year. From July one, as of yesterday, fiscal year totals, we've issued eight hundred and thirty-eight permits. Uh, we've collected two hundred and, almost two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in fees. And that's what an added value of twenty million five hundred thousand dollars to the town. So when I say we've collected two hundred and sixty thousand in fees, that's an added value of the estimated of what it's gonna be looking at. It's like putting a twenty million dollar value on top of a, a building on the community. And inspections, we have completed right now, we've completed sixteen hundred and eighty-nine inspections. Uh, and that's given us thirteen hundred and two trips. So to complete one five to six hundred and eighty-nine inspections, we had made thirteen hundred and two trips to do that. So, uh, so that's kind of where we're at on the snapshot now. I feel like we're gonna meet and cede our budget again this year for permit fees. And I feel like we're on track to doing another five, six hundred thousand dollars in fees. Uh, it is increased every year. Uh, so, um, so like I said, we're not, I'm not asking for much. Uh, that's my wish list. Uh, uh, the biggest thing is we get the line items and replace that one truck. Uh, and, um, so we can be more efficient, you know, save some gas money and want to have it down the road.
Thanks Kenny.
Yes, sir.
My question here would be either to you or Drew, or both. Where are you right now regarding revenue coming in? Are you over budget?
It's my understanding Drew told me to, um, I'm making money. The department's making money.
The reason I say this is because if you are making money, then we probably should go ahead and replace this truck in this year's budget.
Actually, he's, last year, he went way over.
Yeah.
Because of the apartment.
Yep.
And we used some of that money last year. This year, since we increased the revenues to cover that, we're right on target for where we'd be at.
In addition, which is, is he on target or is he out?
He's on target for what we budget. I mean, it's less than where we were last year at this same time because we don't have that major apartment complex. Like I said, last, that was a huge chunk of change all at once. But he's on track to meet budget.
The reason I say this is because we helped out La Marco the same way.
Right.
And, and I would like to see the same process go to Kenny if we could do that.
Yeah, but there probably won't be a problem to get next year's budget. I, I don't, I don't see him being exorbitant over his budget this year like he was last year.
Not for a new vehicle?
Not yet unless you got something big on you.
Well, um.
Not for a new vehicle?
Well, I, I talked to Chancellor, but I let Chancellor know a month or two ago, came off, we talked about it. Just to, maybe, not to draw it out, um, you know, building permit, uh, permit fees are, and insulation and demo fees are, are based on value, building value. That's how we, that's how we determine our fee on that particular. So we were basing, so let's say a contractor terms in a building permit application, they say, oh, it's gonna cost us two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to build. That's what, because we have the values for approval. Well, what we have been using, and it was based on two thousand fifteen ICC universal code council, uh, headwind chart, we were using ninety-four dollars a square foot for heated. And this is on residential. For heated and thirty-five for unheated. So they, so based on their square footage, they were saying it may cost two twenty on the application. So I figured it up, it costs two thirty-five. We, we base the permit fee off two thirty-five because we're using the two thousand fifteen ICC chart. Because, let's be honest, folks are not gonna tell you a full value of what they're doing, you know what I'm saying? So, now that being said, with the code change, we have gone to two thousand twenty-one, um, ICC, and it raised it up substantially. I mean, they were talking a hundred and sixty-five dollars a square foot heated. I didn't wanna do that because we're not raising our permit fees, but if you raise the valuation of, it's gonna raise the fee. So what we did, what I did is I went back, I said, okay, we need to be fair in our market. So I went to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot. And I checked at that thirty-five hundred. So now, when somebody submits for a building permit, yes, their fees are gonna be a little bit higher because the valuation's gonna be higher. And we're on point now where we need to be at. Because when houses, the average price in Hope Mills of, of a house, a new house is three hundred plus thousand dollars, you know, we got to be on par with our fees also, with our valuation point. So, so we, to answer that question, we will have a little more money coming in because of the valuation fees have changed, because we had to get up to date with them. But we're not, we haven't raised our fees. It's just the valuation that's basing it. So we'll have a little more money coming in. That's why I feel comfortable issuing what cede our budget that we're trying to do. Because I mean, we've got, what Chancellor, Emily, we've got what? Fifteen, fifteen hundred, two thousand houses coming?
That, and that's kind of where I'm going, you know what I'm saying? You know? If, if there's any way.
Well, if it's going over, then yeah, there'll be extra funds there because these permit fees have to stay within the park.
Right.
Yeah.
But that would be enough for him to, to buy a replacement truck in this town.
Yeah, if it's there, we can do the same thing. I'll have to deal with it.
Like the hard little market.
And I was part of this week with Kenny, I would say definitely between now and July, he's just gonna have a quiet view of their houses, gonna go vertical, and they're gonna come in.
Yes. Alright, anything else on the board? Mr. Martin?
Uh, just, just a comment on a couple things that caught my eye. Another previous board meeting, we talked about, uh, we discussed training, budgets for all the departments. I really think a five hundred dollar increase is very much, um, I, I'd like, I myself think it would be more than that. And a whole lot more than that, because like I said, the only, the only reach in class for one person is when you've got five hundred dollars worth. So you're not, you're not even, you're not even passing for an increase. So I, you know, I, I'm, I'm a proponent of it. I think we need to look at the, uh, training and travel line items for all the departments. I know we have to. And I know that Chancellor mentioned one for the board as well. Um, I think that's important. Um, and the other thing is, um, this is just for Chancellor and the department had to discuss, but, um, I think we need to look at those permit fees. If the state says we charge it a certain dollar, not, I mean, that's what the state says, I don't, you know? We need to be, we need to be looking at that. And, uh, we don't need to be cheating ourselves. And I know what you said you did, and I understand why you did it. Um, but yeah, I, I think we need to, we need to go to permanent fees.
With that from Mr. Marley, uh, I was going to say, uh, we, I've, I've, we raised the fees for permanent, permanent stations two years previous in a row. And I was trying to say, and we're, we're in comparison to Miss College, our size. We're in comparison to Clayton, Chupac, Arena, corner, those five places. So we're, we're in the, in the, in the, in the mark, so to speak. We're there at it. Uh, uh, I'd like to see how we do this year with the valuation increase, by how much we need to increase it, and then maybe next year's budget. Not just for next year's budget, do it and figure out where I need to be at at that point. I'd like to figure out what the difference is, kind of like that. But I know what you're saying. We, we don't wanna sell ourselves short. But, uh, as of right now, we're on par with everybody else on size, so to speak. You know, I wanna try to stay competitive with that. You know? But I, I was, I'm writing myself as short.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Alright, it's, uh, smoke eaters. Go ahead, Chief.
Thank you, Mary. Um, I was the priorities. Um, we've got grants, substations, equipment, planning and staffing. Um, we've been pretty diligent. Uh, the deputy chief's been working angry. And we have put in a lot of stuff for grants to try to take, eat some of the costs and stuff we're asking for. Um, everything that we put in for, for the grants is on the higher priority list. That way you can stand a bigger chance of actually getting the grants. So, um, some of the bigger ticket items we've got on here are a load on those. That's why we're looking at it during the end of the budget. Um, under the grants, the, uh, we have one with the Cannon Foundation that submitted eleven twenty-five of twenty-four. Um, the award announcement should be in March of this year. We requested twenty-three thousand six hundred and eighty for purchase of a new vehicle, um, that will replace the assistant firefighter's vehicle. And, uh, the total price of that vehicle was forty-three, six eighty. And the talent responsibility of who received the grant will be twenty-five thousand. Um, we've got the assistant firefighters grant submitted to December twenty-four. Uh, we anticipate, uh, the funding selection date may later than April of twenty-five. Um, requested, uh, thirty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, eighty-five cent for micro grant for equipment. That's seven AEDs and three sets of mannequins, uh, for training. These AEDs will allow us to put AED on every vehicle we have in our department. And the mannequins would be used for training during our county as well as training other town staff and departments and citizens in the community. Uh, we've also submitted to the Gary Sine's Foundation, uh, submitted it on twelve thirty of twenty-four. Requested ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars, eighty cent. Uh, that is a joint application with the police department. Um, part of that will be thirty, uh, body armor vests for their department, and then award rescue boats for us. It's a double stack set totaling sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Chief, back to, uh, before we move here, back to that, a second grant, what's that five percent match?
Dollar line?
Yeah. And then five percent of the thirty-two? Five percent of the thirty-two?
Yes.
Okay.
That'd be sixteen hundred dollars roughly.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
I want little sticky pads on. Oh, okay.
Talking about the AEDs?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, the particular, yeah.
Okay, Chief, not to interrupt you, just wanted to, just a couple of points there.
Yes, sir. Um, the next thing we have, we're asking is substations. And, um, I got a study that was done back in March first of two thousand. By the fire chief that was here then. We've got, I don't know, pass this out, so I can have a look at it.
Those were twenty-five years ago. The chief was thinking about areas toward any substation based on where the town would be growing the most. He was looking at five areas back then. And he was pretty much hitting the nail on the head if you look at areas.
So, uh, his first area was up toward, um, York Hill and Road, hopefully it'll go there. That was his first choice twenty-five years ago. Our first choice now would be around the Legion Road, Pinewood Drive area. One, the town already owns some land there. Um, this would be what we think of a good place for a substation. Um, it's right down the street from the two biggest schools we have in our district. Probably the biggest church we have in our district. A nursing home, Sweetwater subdivision, and the one apartment complex that's going in. Um, so that would be a really good area for us to expand. The third substation would be around the Waldo's Beach Cannon Road area. These are not permanent like location. This is just a ballpark location. This would give a five-minute response anywhere in the town's fire district at these locations we have listed on here. And we'll get to a map portion here in a minute where you can see that. Uh, the fourth station would be around Morocco Drive, the Chickenfoot Road area. Uh, the fifth location would be Cameron Road, Highway one sixty-two. And then the sixth, um, location would be around Black's Bridge area, somewhere close to the two ninety-five corridor. Yes, sir.
Can we knock out this substation in Morocco Road? Because we already know that. It's not suitable for first, uh, has no water.
That's, we're not talking about that picture property at all. That's, we're not talking about that picture property at all.
We're not talking about that picture property. In existing ways. Affected by that picture property's, uh, ability to handle a fire station.
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
I will just talk about our station around Morocco Road, not Morocco, what's that? From the, to.
You're talking about Lady Lane or Lady Boe Lane?
Is this going to be affected as much as the Lady Lane would?
No, this, this has nothing to do with that at all. These are just, uh, strategic locations where a substation for the fire department would benefit the town. And thi- this is not something we're saying we've got to have right. This second, this is part of the long-term plan. If you look in those reports, uh, and I also have a news article from twenty years ago where they discussed it net for a fifteen-year plan. Where they were talking about approving one station right away and then a second within two or three years. And hopefully to have all five of those by the year two thousand fifteen.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. The, the one that we would be asking for right away would be around the Legion Road area. That'd be most beneficial, I think, at this time. Around Legion Road, Elk Road area.
Jerry, we already own that property. Well, except for five of them, two pieces as well now. The Legion Road is not down.
Yeah. But the town owns seven acres.
I was under the impression that nothing could be built.
I was, um, under the impression that nothing could be built there because of the, the.
The power line right away, you have to be so many feet.
If you look at the blow up that's in the package, um, that I have on screen, it talks about the proportion of the areas we own that would be outside of that area we're talking about. And two private old pieces, heavy, and it's up to.
And that would be enough, large enough?
Yeah.
Just that piece like that. Uh, that's the power line.
Yeah.
Just three of that piece. Chief, before we go, how many bays would we like to get putting here?
Probably two, drive-through bays.
Two, three bays, I think. I, I was, I was looking at that too, it's like, well, did three go on there?
I would, if, if we're looking at putting two drive-through bays, that's essentially enough room for four pieces of equipment. If they're triple stacked.
How many crews would go there?
Well, well, right off the bat, we're essentially putting engine crew over there to start with, with the potential of maybe putting a squad crew there as well, something simply running medical belt.
And yet, anything else on the substations before we move on, the equipment? Okay.
Um. Is there a slide of the map on there?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, just right quick. If you're looking at the map, then it's a whole lot easier if you go to the links on, uh, GIS. Do it. But with each one of these stations, the shaded areas match which station they're with. But if you notice, they overlap into each different zone here. So, that gives you that coverage. Um, the response times, it's based off of, is a thirty-five mile per hour constant speed, like this station to say, Southview Senior High. That does not take into effect, uh, traffic lights, um, vehicle traffic or anything else. But if we put these stations here, that would, uh, drastically reduce response times for our equipment. To the same, that's some of these outlier areas. There's been, um, and I've heard a question of, that's been asked, like with the PD, how have they already outgrown this building? And somebody may have that question about how the fire department outgrown this building. We haven't. The town outgrown this building. That's where we're at. It's not that the fire department is too big for this building. It's that the town is too big for this one fire department.
So, all of these acres, we've been adding some in, like Emily?
Yep.
And then some.
But in the, uh, little handout I gave you there too, it, it also explains, uh, the thirty-five mile per hour speed limit. And the times you're supposed to be home soon, as far as the first engine and your ladder companies and all that stuff too. If you have any questions about that. Uh, some of the equipment we're asking for. Uh, we want to replace our current breathing air compressor system. This is the system we use to fill up all the air bottles and stuff on our air packs. When we get done fighting fires, come back to the station, have to refill bottles. Uh, it's not like a regular air compressor, this is actual breathing air. So, the one we're looking at, uh, we got the quote from Safe Air Systems. It's a Bauer Legacy six thousand PSI compressor. Um, has a two-position containment fuel station and a full bank control panel. Um, it also fills with four brand-new six thousand PSI storage bottles, so that you can keep them full, if something happened to the compressor, you still have four bottles you can fill off of. Um, the price for that system is fifty-two thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars, ninety-two cents. We looked at doing a grant for this, this is one of the things that was low on the priorities for whatever reason. But that's why we've got it, it's not in a grant. Um, our current system, the compressor is a nineteen ninety-eight. I think it's an old military compressor. And it also has a two-bank system on it, um, fuel station, and it's a forty-five hundred PSI system. Most everything, these days, everything, the new stuff is basically a six thousand PSI now. And we need a six thousand PSI system to fill that, the big aerial bottles on our new ladder trucks work. Um. Some of the other equipment we want to replace is our current washer and dryer that is in the decon room. Um, I looked on it and I can't remember, you know what year that washer was? Nineteen ninety-six washing machine. The white dryer you see there in the picture on the slide is a residential dryer that came from one of our firefighters. It's not even a commercial grade dryer. Uh, we would like to replace those with that stacked washer and dryer. Um.
Did they not put any of this equipment in there from that building?
Uh, I can't really answer that because I weren't really privy to a whole lot of that information back then. We may be able to tell you.
Some of the equipment was brought from the old fire station to the new fire station. Because we were under the impression, the previous management, saving as much as possible and trying not to spend, to go under budget. I was recommending getting new stuff while we had this money.
Yeah, we had the money.
I know. But there were certain things that seen on the old station that went into the new stations that, uh, previous management was fine with and thinking we were saving money. Because I told you all several times, I said, this is the cheapest money we're ever going to see.
Yeah.
At that rate, interest rate.
Yeah.
And so, but now it's not. But that's what we're having to do now.
And I would say, by the way, on his behalf, that washing machine, that is a code violation. Because it's, it's not built for commercial use, this is a domestic washing machine, it's not even supposed to be in that building.
I bet it's a right there.
Well, I'm, I'm not, my fault, my fault, not.
The washing and drying, I'm sorry. I was going to say the dryer, you know, man.
Exactly.
What's, what's the cost here, Chief?
Oh.
Uh, I did, DC did put one on there.
Uh, I thought we had one on there.
Once there's double stack, it's about sixteen thousand dollars. The dryer, if you see over here, is a red cabinet, it's seven thousand dollars.
Yeah. So, the, the combo package is how much?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sixteen thousand, okay.
Now, what the combo dryer does, the gear washers, when the bottom of it washes about three sets of gear at a time, the top dryer is going to be predominantly for like towels and things to wash the trucks. And the cabinet dryer will actually be for the gear itself. Our policy down for every fire we go to, they have to come back to wash their turret gear with their spare set to reduce the consumptives that they're facing.
Yes, the new light cancer initiative and stuff, about everybody's doing. Um, and also that red cabinet dryer, that'll do four sets of gear. But if you look in the bottom, there ain't a little yellow, you see a fire hose. You can also use it to drive a fire hose, so it's not hanging on a rack out back out there in the sun, degrading the material on that floor.
I'm just shocked in all the years of budgeting, nobody ever brought this to our attention. And I understand the cost basis, and I know I was on the phone at the last meeting, but I think I would have been okay. Nobody told us that the building had, the town had outgrown the building, the people had outgrown the building. Nobody said that to us, so that was very new to me. The other thing is, I'm all about saving some money, but if somebody would have brought these pictures to us, we would not have told them, no, um, let's keep it under budget. So, sometimes they just seem to be brought to us instead of people assuming that they think they know what we, we want.
That's, that's why we're burning my mind, but like I say, this guy has a big list, but.
That's why we're doing what we're doing.
Yes.
Yes, that's why we started this last year, and now we're in year two. Then you want to?
Okay, uh, the next thing is we want to get into, uh, the vehicles. So, previously we had a, um, a vehicle replacement plan. And I, I think the last manager did away with that.
Yeah. Um. Marley, I don't know if you remember, we started this plan not long after I got here. And it approved by the county.
It was.
So.
I'm on it for it.
So, if you look at that, uh, in the graph down there, it started the fall of sixteen, where it saved two trucks in seventeen. And the town did the first payment in eighteen. So, we were supposed to have replaced two more trucks. And did the order in twenty-three. Hopefully receiving in twenty-four and the first payment would have been this year. Uh, we have not replaced any trucks since two thousand seventeen, that's the last time any of our big trucks were replaced. So, and twenty-one thirty-two there were, it's talking about fall of twenty-three. Twenty-one thirty-two was a two thousand four Pierce. That is no longer here. So, we don't have anything to replace it with currently. Twenty-one fifty-one is a nineteen ninety-six Pierce ladder truck, it is twenty-nine years old. And it's sitting out there in the bay now. That is our, I guess you'd say, our second out ladder truck. We are, we're currently trying to get, uh, quotes and stuff and drawings, we have some already. Um, we don't have a definitive price on that. But if we were to order right now, you're looking anywhere at two to three years delivery time before we get them. That's the demand on them. Um. So, and you can see the price out there to the side. There's something like fifty-five thousand dollars for the engine and a million for the ladder. You go ahead and double that.
I think more. Well, this chart was made two thousand sixteen.
Correct. Yeah.
The average cost for making a ladder truck right now, the unit's running at about one to one forty-five billion. And the ladder trucks are anywhere from two to two and a half billion.
That's on our big trucks, um. We would also like to replace the deputy chief's vehicle. It is, uh, it's a two thousand eleven Ford F one fifty. And we would like to replace it with a twenty-five hundred pickup. That way we have something large enough to pull the trucks we have out there, hold the boats. Um, typically four-wheel drive, just for implement weather. And they range anywhere from sixty to seventy thousand dollars, that's state contract. Uh, the other pictures, those are just pictures of the fleet that we actually have. There you see the ninety-six ladder truck, um, the two two thousand eleven trucks. The most recent one we have was the fire marshal vehicle, which is a twenty-twenty-four G six. Um, next we have our training. We do want to, um, up our training budget. On here you have a list of what's required, excuse me, required for D O I and ISO. As far as, and those are hours of training. Hundred ninety-two firefighter, twelve driver operator, six hazardous materials, so on and so forth. Uh, we're training every day to keep our skills up and try to be the best we can for the citizens that we provide service to. We're asking for forty-eight hundred dollars, um, for online training program through fire engineering. As an annual recurring cost. Uh, this software is updated regular basis, um, to keep everything up to date, or to train the material that all that's on it. You can go on there, online, and train on anything you want to train on. Uh, that would be available for all of our staff.
Chief, uh, Chief, excuse me, do we have, do we have anything in, that we're using now?
Online training?
Yeah, online training.
No, well, we did just purchase a software, um. What was that thing? Yeah, yeah, uh, it's an English combustible. You go out and take photos of houses in the neighborhood or schools. And you can actually place fire element where you want to on there. And the people can come in and you can practice, um, commanding the fire ground and everything else on there. You can do training with it, we also use it for promotional processes.
So, that's a separate package then?
That is separate, yes, sir, we already have it. Yeah, Fire Combustion is actually, I think the name was. Um, so right now, our training material budget is fifteen hundred dollars. And we would like to raise it to ten thousand, that would include that forty-eight hundred there. And allow us money to upgrade some of our boots.
Did you say fifteen hundred dollars?
Just one.
Fifteen hundred dollars in the budget for training for the whole year?
Yeah.
For materials?
For materials, training materials.
Okay, alright, yeah.
But our training library is very outdated. We have bought a few new books this year, but there's so much more out there that we need to give.
And, uh, did thousands of do it?
Yes, sir.
Alright, okay.
Uh, our training and travel budget was seven thousand dollars, and we'd like to increase it to fifteen. We, for the first time, I think, went to, myself and the deputy chief, went to the North Carolina Fire Safety Summit this year. Uh, got some pretty good training up there. That's the first time that I've been to any kind of like little seminar or something like that. But we'd like to start sending some of our people to the FDIC, which is the Fire Department International Prevention in Indianapolis. This annual, uh, the National Fire Academy in Inittsburg, they do classes all the time. Week after next, the deputy chief and I will be headed to the Midwestern Chief's office. And to my dollars, that's the first time anybody from our department has been there since I've been here. And there's a host of classes, um, going on up there. Uh, just for an example of what we'll be doing, uh, the deputy chief will be in an accreditation class. The first class that went, I'll be taking one for managing fire operations. That afternoon, both of us will be in strategic planning, fact and fiction. Uh, that Thursday, there's two classes, one on selection and assessment for fire services, hiring and promoting the best. The second class is risk reduction. And then that Friday, we're gonna end the week with, uh, prevention and screening, measure of happiness twenty twenty-five. We're trying to educate ourselves, and we want our people educated too, the best we can. I think the more education you have, the better you're gonna be.
Chief, do we take advantage of any of the classes that are taught by FTCC?
Yes, sir, we go to those regularly as well.
And, but none of these are offered by FTCC?
No, m- most of these you find at conferences, like seminars and stuff like that. Uh, most of the FTCCs, yeah, excuse me, FTCC stuff will do. It's kind of like a continuing education, or unless you go there, like to get a water rescue certification. Or specific, uh, certification, like fire certification, house construction, things along that line. That money would also go to send our fire marshals, uh, people in our fire marshals' office to, uh, fire safety. It's different classes, and, uh, different training for those, them as well. Like the Inittsburg different classes, sports bases, and all that stuff as well. And then our final thing we're asking for is, uh, additional staffing. And right now, what we're asking for, uh, we'd like to put on a level one fire inspector. Position to add to the fire marshal's department. Uh, town currently has around five hundred thirty-five inspectable locations. Including possible homes, department, uh, places, commercial businesses. And most on the annual inspection site. As of August of twenty twenty-three, uh, fire related permit and inspection fee, uh, being collected within the hotel, fire marshal's office. Along with our admin system. And I did a breakdown of what we took in. Uh, fire marshal Carter actually pulled the numbers for me. You know, August first of twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, we took in approximately twenty-one thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars. Uh, this past year, from January first of twenty-four to December thirty-first, we took in approximately thirty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars. For a total of fifty-three two nine four. Um, now like Kenny said, a while ago. That number is just going to increase. The more property we annex, the more houses, the more businesses it builds, that's gonna go up every year. And we're asking to add one more level one inspector to assist them, uh, with their job. We're recommending them with a grade, pay rate twenty-one, which is around fifty-three three sixty-three. I think that's all we could come up with.
That's pretty, uh, that's pretty comprehensive, Chief. I'll go back and ask the same question, looks like you've, you've already paid for this grade twenty-one.
Well, that's over a year and a half period, so.
Yeah, part of that last budget here.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we budgeted twenty-five thousand for the first year, and we're at thirty-one. So there's something over six thousand in some question.
Mayor, I'd just like to piggyback on Chief, those, uh, fire inspectors he's talking about, I used to be a fire inspector in the county. Those are the state mandated fire inspections, they have to do. Uh, they don't have a choice, they, they have to get all maintenance inspections. So after a business opens, I do a CO, and it's a fire marshal or a fire inspector job, they go in and make sure they're maintaining the egress, egress and safety. So they have to do it, that's why their schedule will depend on the business. It could be an annual, it could be a bi-annual, I mean, a two-year or a three-year inspection, but their statement that they have to be done.
Thanks Kenny, I, I see this position as mission critical for the operations. Alright, any other, uh, comments, questions, Mr. Marley?
Just, like I said, just a quick comment, just something forward to think about, um. Uh, the same, the same with your training, I think, I think the training budget is high, but, um. When we talk about, um, and I'm gonna be the hated one here, when we talk about building stations, talk about building fire pumps and stuff, it's more than just building this. I mean, you gotta look, if you wanna engine in a, um, in a squad, that's a minimum of five people per year. You got three captains salaries, you gotta pay three lieutenant salaries, nine firefighter salaries, fifteen people. Fifteen personnel you got to hire for each one of those stations. But you gotta pick up salary and benefit, three to five million dollars for a station, that's on the loading unit. That's, that's not a, that's a no thrills fire department. Just three to five million on the loading unit. Then you got to have, you gotta buy an engine, if they want an engine in the squad. Yes, we got other engines out here, but they need to be replaced. And when you talk about building a substation, you need to put an engine in there, you don't need to pay for what you got, you need to buy, uh, engine, squad, go out there, have this engine. So you're looking at probably another, you know, almost two million dollars in engine and squad. Plus the equipment to equip those. So, it, we, we wanna build, and I'm all for, you know, substations in its time. I still maintain myself that I don't feel like it's really time for a substation. It's time for a substation when the cost of contract meets the cost of building. Well, our contract and cost between everybody we contract, we have full response contracts, we, we can't even hire half the personnel to stack that station for what it's costing us to contract right now. So I think we could, I think we would be better to, and I, and I'm all for building stations in the future. But I just don't think the town right now is to that point. When there's other things that, that the fire pump needs to replace what we got now, out there, replacing engines and vehicles that we got now. Um, and I speak to the whole, I know Matt, Matt needs to speak to it a whole lot, I know Kenny, and I know, um, the manager at the Fire Administration. The board I was on, we sit there in the board meetings, and we ask, the police chief says, oh yeah, we need this, we need new furniture, we need that, we need those, we need this and that, the third, they got it. The Fire Administration, the Fire Department, oh, we're good, we can make do, we're good, now that we're there. So, um, that's just my two cents, uh, that's just the conversation for, uh, this fire chief and the manager to have during the bus time. Um, like I said, I, I'll be the hated one, but I think we're talking about a lot of money here. When you start talking about building not only one fire department, but four or five, eventually down the road. Um, that's a, that's an added expense, and, uh, that's, that's millions and millions of dollars. So, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Alright, anything else? That's it?
Yeah, if I may, right quick, Marley.
Yep.
Don't worry about it.
I would like to take this time to, to thank all of you for bringing this to, um, staff and the board of detentions. And what your needs are. Um, I had a chance to work with you guys last night. They sent a handman down to my house to pick me up, to take me another round, but here I am. So, proud of each and every one of you. You, you do a great job. Chief Donner, good job. Fire chief, good job. Kenny, good job. Martha, I'm glad we do that. A few ladies forcing me off of, good job. Rick, if I don't know how, excuse me, I don't know how we could get along without the staff that we have. I guess we could get along, but I don't think we'd be well on that today. Um, we just need to take time and thank each and every one of you for all you do. And, uh, and hope you just keep up the good work. Thank you, Don, Bruce, I may have to do it there too.
Before we get to Don and Bruce, Chief, you got anything else?
No, I'll, 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 I'll.
You sure?
Yes.
Now's time. Going once or twice? Right on.
Back, back at the substation, and the contracts, and I agree with Brian, or Commissioner Law. But we've been buddies a long time, I mean, Brian, uh, I agree with Commissioner Law, contracts are a good thing. Um. But if you're paying money for a full response contract in an area. And we are still running calls in that area, because we are pleasuring geographically, that is a problem. And with the substation on Legion Road, we could address all of the areas I mentioned. And I thought they hated one too, and you could probably alleviate one of those contracts. Now that being said, if you put a substation somewhere, because I know that'll come with it, you will run more calls. And depending upon where you put it at, you might be running a whole bunch of somebody else's as well. But, to me, it's about the citizens and the service you provide, provide the best response you can do. And, uh, I, I'll just leave that at that.
Alright, thanks Chief.
Mayor, before you make that, um, when you do go for the break, we did put maps up in the back from current day, town bill, and twelve years ago town bill. So y'all can look at and see the amount of growth that we've actually had in the town over the past twelve years.
We're gonna take a ten-minute break, actually it'll take us off for about ten minutes, and I will. Okay.
Vehicles to us and we can replace tires to serve the bench top of them as well. So that we can get them turned around quicker than having to go to places else. And it is considerably less expensive.
Don, did you replace those tires on that Pathfinder for Ken?
My tires did. But they facilitate, did a good job.
Um, we did do a crew leader position at street department. Um, we completed the installation of the rear doors at town hall, so that is now ADA compliant. Um, and we are working towards the front. And I'll see it's all tore up right now. Um, when it's complete, the reception and the permitting area is going to be ADA compliant as well as we've taken additional measures to ensure the security in the front of town hall as well. Um, we completed the dam emergency action plan and the downstream innovation study. Uh, it's a safety requirement. We got that finished and came into the state and the federal government. We were identified that our walk-in bathroom in the park was actually on private property. So we went and moved and replaced three hundred thirty million feet of the walk-in model last year. So that is now concrete similar to what we've got out front in some of the areas. And future years, we are going to look at completely replacing all that asphalt for a better surface. So that will happen in steps as time goes along. We did complete the multi-use path at the lake park, so that all that asphalt trail is gone. One of the things we did that wasn't on there, but that was really critical, that y'all may not be aware of, is we actually handled the Sharps reclamation and disposal program for our residents. For people with diabetes, stuff like that. The, the county and the government changed the way that we could get rid of them and had to handle the attached materials. So Bruce and his crew revamped that entire program so that we were still able to provide that service to our residents at no cost to them and no additional cost to them. Uh, we, we all know we, we completed the repairs of the U circle. We did go out and we got a grant for the Kenland Road sidewalk project to go from Hope Mills Middle School to Main Street. The Woodland Hills project is in process. Uh, last week we got the engineering completed. And right now, they are looking at issuing a notice receipt for the third of March. You know, it'll be almost a one point five million dollar project to get stormwater and street repaired. But in that neighborhood, uh, we did complete the standards and specs update. So that when we go out and inspect the streets and everything else, we're able to provide a better product for all of our residents. And as far as training, everybody wants to do some training, but what, one thing that I want y'all to know is that we, for our department, a lot of times, actually bring training to us. Instead of trying to send twenty people to Raleigh to a class, um, we will bring one instructor here. And that way, all of our, our entire department, what we do is twice a year, we do stand down days and portray them. And we'll bring somebody in and then, of course, we offer that part, um, somebody else that might be able to make beneficial use of this work. So those are the ways that we've got customers. All right. On our slides, um, the first thing that we've got are, are major projects. We do have the Woodland Hills up there. The estimated cost of one point seven million dollars increased from fifty six. Um, but we do have, our contract, I think it's one point four or five six. So it'll be just over one point five pound of engineering probably once it's all said and done. East Patterson Street, um, our box available is four million fifty thousand dollars. The estimated cost is almost four and a half million dollars. I want y'all to know right now that we are probably going to have to knock on the door and say, we need five hundred thousand dollars once this project is started. It's already engineered, um, or in engineering. It's soon to be at the thirty percent engineered portion. But this is a project that we cannot, and this is an A table, but we cannot ignore. Um, there are homes up at the top of that embankment. There's water lines, there are sewer lines. And it's not a matter of if that embankment fails, that embankment is going to fail. It is failing right now. Um, and if it goes, it could potentially go catastrophic. And that's why we've been working this, a couple of years in the making, um, to get the engineering done and the permitting done. For work to get a new personnel with that. One of the things that we did was we went back and through a brick grant application. We asked for additional two point two million dollars for that. Um, that way we could leverage our funds from our ARPA and SCIF. So if we get that, we'll be, be good enough on our funding that if we go back to the street and do the nation that our left on, we spend on that and we can take care of some of the things that we actually do that. But that, I, I can't stress enough how critical it is to that embankment as we go. Okay. For our capital, um, and we are looking at replacing nineteen ninety eight model mosquito machine. Um, everybody has expressed an interest in continuing that program and since we are surrounded by water, it's probably one of the better ones that we do have. Um, life cycle replacement, a pickup truck. Knuckle boom is what Elizabeth was referring to. We need to replace our original knuckle boom. It is, I want to say it's a two thousand fourteen model, but at one time, that was the only knuckle boom we had. So that was the truck that was on the road twenty-four seven, Hurricane Matthew, Hurricane Florence, and some of the other major stores that we had. And it is just, it's time to retire it. New positions, we're growing like anybody else. I'm not looking at adding, but, but two positions. One is for a lead facility, we're developing that department right now. Um, our fleet and, uh, Ms. Leanne had mentioned how we are now at two hundred and six people. And not everybody has a truck, but, uh, even though we don't have general purpose trucks for everybody, I know in my department, we have got a ton of special purpose vehicles. And they all need, they can. Crew leaders, we're looking at this year doing a buildings and grounds crew leader and a, um, set of personal crew leader, um, not large expenses, but it is a, a promotion for somebody internally and gives us the opportunity to expand as the town is expanding. Um, then we're going to look at future years, of course, for our street set case department to keep going and back to operators in future years. For our operational requirements, we're looking to rekey the town hall. And I want to do that because we have, have multiple times now been asked to go into an office or open a door for somebody. And department heads in past years have done, for whatever reason, have changed lots. And we don't have keys or master keys for a lot of the doors in town hall. Um, that's just bad duty. So I want to rekey that entire building and, and we do need to have a policy that, you know, department heads, just because they feel that they need it, they can't go over two slots. We need to have access to everyone in that building.
Don, who maintains, who maintains key control? Is it you?
That, that. That's what he's trying to say. I mean. It's supposed to be.
I just come like, wherever like.
There, there never has been.
There, there's the answer. There never has been.
This is stepping on.
What's the estimated cost to rekey?
I, I, it won't be extremely expensive.
Less than five?
Not sure.
Okay. Again, after that, whoever, whoever the key control is, will oversee the rekey, yes sir. And that will be in your department, if we're being honest, okay?
I'll make it much easier for HR too, when we have people leaving to know what we need to collect right now with a power and inventory, so we don't have to.
That could be a security issue. It could be.
Who are relieved of T, she has to pay for this thing, just like the army.
Yeah, we need key control.
Nobody needs key control.
Okay, Don, sorry.
Um, there's been interest put out for the log boom. We don't have accessory requirement for a log boom. It would be beneficial to us structurally as a town. Um, this may be an opportunity to partner with PWC because of their forty-eight inch line downstream. It is more beneficial to them. That they don't have debris going over the, the dams during storm events and damage that forty-eight inch line sewer. They've got more rest to wait. Um, because they have, that their estimate is about eleven million gallons of raw sewage through there every day. So it takes its damage. Again, that's in, in these explosion. Um, bridge repairs with engineering support. Our bridges are still rated as good. Um, last DOT inspection we've got, um, they are waning. You know, they're showing where they're going to need some repairs. So we're looking at getting an engineer so that we can develop a plan and identify all of the structural repairs that we need to make. Um, get a cost estimate on it and go back to next fiscal year and actually do the repairs. A dam drainage system is something that Snodgrass has recommended that we do. We've not had a tire read for it yet. After we completed it, now we ended up hitting that belly at the toe on the right hand side downstream. But that has kind of settled out. And there was a wet spot that we had that was covered for the first couple of years. But that has dried. It's, there's no standing water or any, any signs that we're having any problems there. Um, but at some point in time, we would like to go and dig in a drain, um, in the four bay area. Um, credit for the street division, again, it's nothing large. As far as expense goes, it'll allow us to take multiple lawnmowers to step out. Now we didn't have many, had multiple trucks and trailers. Um, since we started going with crew tabs, we can, you know, more efficiently mobilize people and equipment. And then ADA improvements, um, we're at the point where one of the sub provision programs, that is probably going to be a multi-year process. We've been working on the relatively simple ones over the past few years. We're at a point where we want to get into a Fox Meadow because of how the elevation changes are and the way that some of the sidewalks and curbing is, uh, South Main. Um, there are ADA requirements that you have to have approaches, site, um, rest areas, directional ramping and stuff like that. So that's going to have to be engineered. So we're looking at putting in an engineer so that we'll do the designs for those two neighborhoods and then go back with a cost estimate for the following year to actually feed them.
Don, before we move on to capital, was there, is there anything that was significant from the Snodgrass dam inspection report?
No, we're looking at.
Okay. I just wanted to ask that question.
We have got to get buoys back out there on the lake. Now, they do not have to be as long as the other ones were. I think Snodgrass said to go from one side to the other. But I've noticed, just by living over there, I've noticed big logs. And when they go over that dam, they stand straight up. And I know when they hit, they have to damage that concrete. So please, can we get a price on what it would be to put the buoys back on the lake?
I, I could tell you right now, it would be about a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
And how long would, and what's the link to that?
That'll be engineered. That's not for me to determine. There will be a hydraulic engineer that will determine anchor plates and the safety lights and all those clear areas. That's not for me to say, it's not for you to say. That's for somebody that is educated and trained in that area to say.
Okay, but can we please?
That, that's up to y'all.
For adding to this.
Yeah, we have it on there as, as something that we would like to do, but you've got to authorize spending in the next two years.
Okay, but I don't see it here on your operational plan, so I think.
Number two.
Well, now, how would I know a log boom is, uh, I'm not an engineer, I don't know anything about water other than I drink it and take a bath in it. But how would I know that buoys are log booms?
There, there's a difference between a buoy and a log boom, a big difference. You know, to me, if you tell me you want a buoy out there, that's essentially a big, look. A log boom is what you're asking for is a barb.
Okay, but whatever it takes to help stop, we hope for.
That's why we put it, that's why we put it in the engineer's hands because they're the experts and, and the assistants.
We could explore the opportunity of partnering with PWC and I think that's what Don mentioned.
Yes, sir.
I think that's your start point.
Okay. Whatever, let's just do something out there for people.
Thanks, Don.
Okay. Uh, for capital and future years planning, um, they have not changed. You know, we are growing just like everybody else is and very young in its phase. So we're going to have to look at expanding our footprint at some point in time. We're looking at a multi-story storage building, two-story that we can do some, second story, um, storage for things like the salt spreaders, mosquito machines and stuff like that, things that we can get off the ground. Um, com, uh, government complex master plan. And we talked about expanding town hall. And, and this would be a great opportunity to have an expert look at and protect the growth of the town, protect the growth for whatever the support staff is going to be for that and help with developing the government complex. And then, of course, we've got town hall expansion. And then, uh, for our grant funding items, um, we've been awarded the Camero Road sidewalk for six hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. That is a handful of award and, you know, we're still working through some, um, financial issues with how the allocations are. Um, we need to get that right before we start it because it's like usually for the town, we try to do it later. Um, the safe streets for all grant was a twenty-four thousand dollar max. There's been, it's ninety-six thousand dollars has been awarded to the town for that. We've asked for a one July start date for us to go in with this one year because it requires a twenty-four thousand dollar town max, so I hope we can budget for it.
Starting with your acting worship.
Sorry. Um, y'all know, you know, about the brick grant, we asked for two point two seven five on the brick grant. And we're expecting to hear from that on the twenty-fourth of January. And it, we think we're going to get through the first round for the year. And if we can get that, that's at seven five twenty-five, that's where I'm looking at leveraging our SCIF and ARPA funds that we already have in the bank against that. And that way I can use that funding and take whatever's left over for, uh, some road repairs. Things that are not on there though, that we've also still are working on. Um, we're looking to get a proposal for feasibility, an initial, a cost estimate for the, to change this, the trench street utilities, um, this RDBC or RDEB grant funding. Um, do decorative lighting of the multi-use path, uh, the main street sidewalk and mid-block potential project and a pedestrian bridge from the chapel to Heritage Park. And then again, just to keep it in, um, the conversation, we did not sell a lot of cemetery cuts this year. But our cemeteries are getting bought. Residents.
Okay. Any questions from board? Any questions for the board before Don exits? I could say it for you. Don?
Can I, can I add one thing to Don?
Yes, sir.
Um, the only thing I want to add, and I felt the chance about it and a couple of people know. So as, um, as. So a, as Don and, and Public Works talk about expanding their, their operation, and we've all looked at the master plan where Public Works expands to tennis courts. Um, we've made provision for them, um, when we convert, um, or when we build the tennis court and pickleball course over the golf course. One thing that everybody, I, I don't know if y'all are aware of, but, um, the tennis courts was built with LWCF money. And, um, we don't have to deal with it now, but when, when Public Works expands in that area, we have to submit paperwork to LWCF, which is both state and federal, letting them know we're doing that. And the rule of thumb is we got to provide that same amenity within a reasonable distance, which it will be. And we had the golf course. Now, to get them to approve it, that's a whole, it's about a year process. But we have to do that because if we don't, then we can never get an LWCF, uh, LWCF grant again. Uh, they are real particular and strict about, um, removing, tearing down, um, or doing away with amenity um, that they provide LWCF funds with. Even though it was done years and years and years ago, it's in perpetuity, which means you can never do away with the basketball court or the tennis court. Both of those things were built with LWCF money. So just want to put that out there. Um, and so, you know, it's, it's not, it's not an issue right now. Even when we build a new tennis court, we don't have to alert them that we're doing that. It's just that when, when Public Works expands to that area, we got to go through that whole process while they're doing their engineering and design process so that it gets approved. Just want to put that out there.
Yeah, I think this was mentioned probably a couple of boards back when we were first looking at it. We were looking just at those two. When we were doing the, you know, replacement for the basketball court, that's where that came up. So that's actually one comment to, to, to run back out. Anything else? All right, who's next?
But that's my time.
It is your time.
Um, let me go to the slide and sit on. Okay, um, I want to start out my presentation much like everybody else has with, um, celebrating the fact that every now and then we do achieve what the board asks us to, we do what we're told or asked. And so, um, um, when you said small goals and short-term goals reachable within the, we're able to check those things off of our, uh, our list. And so, um, Heritage Park Phase One is complete. Reed's Journey inclusive playground is complete. Um, we purchased the two properties at Lake. And the schematic fact, the schematic phase for the community center sports complex and outdoor pickleball court have been completed. And we're at a point now where, uh, we will ask the board, can we move on to design and develop for Community Center? So, uh, I want to point those things out because you would recall, these are all goals you all set for me the last time around, um, at the last RID dinner. And so, um, in summary, we kind of did the same thing. Um, these are big money items, but they're small in number, but big in dollar number. But these are all things we all have talked about. Um, and so my three priorities, uh, this year in summary is the design development and construction documentation of the community center development. Um, just want to remind everybody, we kind of switched gears a little bit, um, from direction from the board. We all are in agreement that we, um, the goal is to build a new community center and convert the Parks and Recreation Center into a senior center. And so we've asked the engineers to switch gears and do it that way. It's not going to cost us any extra to do that. Um, but I will, I will say that there's going to be a cost associated with converting the, um, the rec center into a senior center. Not too expensive, but there is going to be a cost. We got some issues there that we need to address. And so, um, you know, A before B, we do the community center design and look at the transition and then we move directly into the conversion of the senior center. Those two things can't be done simultaneously while the rec team is there. But we like the budget for the senior center first and then, once that's rolling, come back and budget for the, um, the senior center, which could probably be achieved in a regular CIP. Um, Heritage Park Phase Two, um, is our, our second goal. I've been given direction to move forward with that. We've got some things in place for that. And then, um, a new one for everybody. Uh, we've talked about it amongst some of the board members. But, um, now it's time to actually come clean and tell everybody what we've been doing. And so that is the hottest property land at this. Okay? Next slide, please. So first things first, um, as I mentioned earlier, we have completed the schematic pages for the community center site plan. Um, and we can either have the design team come down and present it to everybody. Um, or if it's the board's pleasure, we can move into design development, which gets more to the nuts of both of them. Um, I will say that with the, um, with the building being commuted into a community center, there are some specific things we ask the design teams to admit. And so, uh, we're still looking at about a twenty-seven thousand square foot building. But, um, things associated with a suspended track, um, multipurpose, uh, group exercise, um, um, artificial turf room and, and aquatic center. Those things have been omitted from the design, uh, for the community center. Also, um, um, along with the, uh, community center, we still wanted to, um, um, show the design or the schematic for the pickleball slash, um, outdoor tennis courts, which, um, is inclusive of a picnic shelter and outdoor restroom. So what you see there is, uh, four tennis courts and a pickleball. Outdoor, with restrooms and a pavilion. Next slide. So if you look at the new square foot cost, um, we've had some conversations with Ken. And, uh, we want to do, um, keep what our goal is, um, of not just having a, um, community center, but we want this to be an, an addition to the ELC. So, um, if you will recall from last year, we went from three hundred square feet per commercial. According to the architects, uh, we're not at three forty because we are now designing for a ELC. A, an emergency, an emergency level building. So, um, with that, you're looking at twenty-seven thousand square feet, which roughly, um, is nine point one million dollars. Um, the program pretty much stays the same with the admission of the aquatic, uh, the aquatic center and some, and senior related rooms. Um, I do want to say that even though the, the existing rec center is going to be a senior center, you'll still have senior function here. There's still going to be senior related classes here because they'll have pickleball, indoor pickleball here and, and at the rec center. But, um, it's just another opportunity if seniors wanted to do activities at the community center. We're not going to admit that. So there will be some opportunities to have senior program at the community center. So, um, there'll be, uh, three multipurpose rooms for class and reservations. Um, an expanded gymnasium with four half-size courts. Um, administration offices, um, we're going to do a serving commercial kitchen that will allow us to bring back meals on wheels. That's another function. We can't do meals on wheels over at the rec center because we're not equipped. But this building will have meals on wheels. That's one, that's one of the programs that, that, um, we've been talking to, uh, some of the Collin County agencies about bringing back. Um, locker room, restrooms, computer lab. Um, we're also going to upgrade our maintenance shed and storage. So, um, our guys get a new updated maintenance. And hopefully do away with the, the maintenance shed we have at golf courses up now. Um, so with junk conditions and parking lot, that's, uh, two point seven million dollars. Um, the good thing about this process is, um, um, the board did approve architectural and engineering design last year, so that fund, that funding is still in place. So it's not one of those things that we got, uh, provide funding for again. Still have money. We still have money for design development and construction documents. Um, and possibly, um, if we wanted to, um, do a design build bridge contract where we get a contract in, so we can look at a design build, um, of delivery method instead of a bidding out. My understanding and talking to some industry professionals, everybody's going to design build now anyway because of how difficult it is to get out. So, um, we, we, we had a chance to talk to a number of people at the conference in Tampa and confirm that's what a lot of municipalities are going to do now. So that's, that's the delivery method I want to look at doing now. Um, and so with, um, design contingency, et cetera, uh, we're looking at about thirteen, um, million dollars. So that's within that thirteen to fifteen million dollars we set for, um, goal, um, last year.
Lamarcus, what would you estimate the renovation of the existing parks and rec? What are we looking at, looking at there? A million, less than a million?
At least a million, and the reason why I said it, your most expensive item, and, and we, we put it in, we put in the budget each year, um, for a fifteen thousand square foot building, you should not have, uh, ten, um, ten HBC units. I think we have ten up there now, might be eleven, I can't remember. It's more than we should. You should have maximum three, three twelve ton units for a building. Um, but more important than that, it needs to be designed by a, um, mechanical, um, engineer, um, so that it's designed the correct way, built correctly. I don't, I don't know that it was designed when we had it built. Uh, what I do know is, um, it was put in by a contractor, he went out of business. And so we've kind of, you know, tanked on maintenance over the years and finally got somebody that can service the H-back units, but that's really not, it's really not efficient, it's not, it's not an efficiently, um, um, heated and air cooled building. And so that's one of the first things, that's going to be your most expensive item. Um, then, you know, the other one's going to be your flooring and some of the other things. But I'm looking at, based on the numbers I looked at and started doing my own, um, my own takeoff from previous projects, you're looking at about one point two million dollars in renovations to the existing building.
So between the two projects, you're looking at probably fifteen?
Yes, so you're, you're right back at that fifteen.
I'd like to say fifteen.
And if we want the fund and, and get the fund, both, um, you know, whatever method you all want to go with, we can look at doing it that way. Um, in addition to that, I've already talked to the architects about upfitting the existing rec center for a senior center, but I told them that's probably going to be an amendment to actually, you know, once the funding's in place, we'd have them do the two projects simultaneously.
Yeah, they'll be in concert with each other, right?
Uh, real quick, so with the, with the new community center, because it's going to be storming as an ELC, will that be able to be a white flag shelter?
It can be, and, and when I first heard that, um, well, either building, I mean, the building we have or not can be that. So yes, it can.
Okay, because I was under the impression that any locker rooms could be a white flag shelter or something like that.
I didn't know that.
I'm not.
I, I know, I know there's been talks about making the existing rec center that.
I spoke with county commissioner chairman, uh, Kurt Vivier the other day. The county is wanting to expand the white flag program out here to Hope Mills and Graves Creek and also east of the river. He said they're going to try to have some funds. What he suggested is instead of us actually doing the work ourselves, put out an RFP for nonprofit, um, organizations to bid on how much it would cost for them to provide the building, you know, the, the people that would work there, stay there every night, food and everything. But we would have to be willing to put in some funds as well if the county would give us funds to roll on with that.
Now, would that be what existing building or the, the new building?
Yeah, it, it wouldn't be considered our building. Not, they would provide the building.
Okay.
Or if we provided the building, then we could put out an RFP for what a nonprofit would come in and take care of it.
I mean, we'd definitely, I mean, it's moving, we need locker rooms, but I'm, um...
I did, I did look into, uh, what Commissioner Craig had shared. I think from my understanding, it's our building, and that we were talking about making the shelter anyway. During a crisis situation, it was revert to a shelter. I think the RFP is the final organization that will come in and run the white flag programs in our building. At least that's what my interpretation is. We still build it. I think it's a great thing to partner with the county for white flag and general shelters. But from my understanding of what I read, it looked like we wouldn't run the white shelter program during that crisis, that, that crisis situation. That organization, we found through RFP, would come in and operate it.
Well, that's not what he told me. Um, he said we could offer the building and put an RFP out for a nonprofit to come in and use our facility. But he said that there are churches and other nonprofit organizations that would provide the building, everything for us out here, and, uh, that that might be a better way for us to go than for us to try to do it ourselves.
Right, um, we can definitely look into it. The question I would add is how often and how, how often do we have to operate it? If it's definitely cold or, um...
Well, white flag, I guess it's considered a way to cope, but I would have that. But you know, they have heating centers hot. Hope Mills, uh, the library is a heating center. They're open, they're open on Sunday afternoons from two to six. It's just a heating center where people can go there and get warm.
Every day.
But no overnight stays.
Okay.
But I would imagine the same thing if it was hot, where you might need a cooling center or something to do the same.
We definitely want to see what the criteria is.
Yeah, for, for the white flag, it is just in the cold and the same thing, um, Commissioner Craig was saying. I think it would be a good, a good, we, we could have that convert that same space into the areas where people can come in with very hot outside. I think one of the challenges, uh, this committee is something that Johannes committee can look at, for instance, is the, um, the space. Need a lot of space to do that. And I think the reason why we don't have it now for some churches or, or places that are not running this year is because they don't have the space. And if you look at how large the county is, we don't have a lot of people, a lot of spaces for people to have white flags. So I think one of the challenges, and, and that's why I think our space is better than finding a nonprofit to help is because you need a substantial, you should have like a substantial amount of space. Otherwise, I think we'll have more places in the county that offer the, you know, the shelter for white flag.
I just wanted to make sure we did what the county said. So who gives money for, you know, the...
And also, may I add, with a emergency shelter like that, Lamarcus won't have the community center built that way and probably upfit the present one we have. You've got to have so many square footage per person. And I should look into it. I don't think our buildings are big enough to do that. You know what I'm saying? We can have a shelter, but we have to make sure and he'll check if we qualify those programs based on the size of the building.
And amenities, like the locker rooms require, we already know need over there.
Yeah. But we need a regular emergency shelter. But we just got to, we just got to check to what they're qualified in.
Okay, let's move on to, um, the other priority, and this was set by the board also. Um, we're told that we want to move forward with Heritage Park Phase Two. Um, the good thing about that, McCann has already given me the master plan that shows Phase Two. They've agreed to, um, provide the graphic for a park tip grant. And we've already started the process of doing a park tip grant, um, for Heritage Park Phase Two. Um, not only a park tip grant, but I was told by the existing, um, um, our, our grant consultant that we should, um, combine grants to help us with our match. So she suggested that we apply for LWCF and an ADA grant that provides us state. Um, so three grant sources to help us with our match. So we are looking to all three of those possibilities. Not saying we'd be able to meet the criteria of all, but we've, we've talked to the grant writer to look at all three of those grants and see what the dates are. Um, and if not this cycle, we get three years of park tip grant, definitely in the next three years. Looking at other grants, kind of like we did with Phase One. We got the park tip grant first, then came D, then came E. So that's, that's another real thing.
Did we have to match that part of the plan?
We did, we did.
We did?
We did. Um, it's, it's, it's a fifty-fifty match. Uh, we only asked for three hundred thousand the last time. I'm going to go for the full five hundred thousand this time. But I was told we should go for the full five hundred thousand. Um, so, um, the cost estimates for Phase Two are still good. Um, we're looking at one point seven million dollars. Um, I want to be upfront, even though you see the bridge on that map plan, this is not the true pedestrian bridge. Um, the, the pedestrian bridge, just the permitting and the review by, um, the court of engineer takes about a year, probably even more now. So, um, I, I told the town manager, if we could make the, the pedestrian bridge its own phase altogether, um, that one point seven million number, dollar number is a good number. We still use that for the estimate. We'll still have to, for this particular project, we'll still have to do, um, um, construction documents and, and, and that whole process. But, um, here again, I was told that we should look at a design build, um, delivery method. We got, we had a great contractor this last time around, he's interested. Um, that being a qualification-based process, can't promise that we'll get the same design team, but, um, having completed Phase One successfully, there'd be a good candidate for Phase Two if we want to go the design build route. The other good thing about that is throughout the, the design process, you know, you'll, you'll get real-time numbers from our general contractor to tell you whether you're with the budget or not. I love engineers, but a lot of times their estimates are a bust. They never, they're never within, you know, the bid. Engineers aren't contractors for a reason, and they're, they're terrible at cost definitely, I want to say that. And so having a contractor onboard to actually review the numbers and if they go through the process would be a great, a great way to go about doing it.
Lamarcus, before you move on, I want to step back to the, uh, community center. Is it your recommendation that we pursue design build on this project?
Absolutely.
And is that the consensus of the board? Want to make sure that we have that consensus. I think that's what you need to hear to move forward with design build. Everybody good? Okay? And also, I guess we'll do the same thing on Heritage Park.
Yes.
Design build on both projects? Everybody good with it? Okay.
All right.
I didn't want to miss that one.
Here's, here's a piece that might get me in trouble.
Opportunities.
So, so there's been a lot of debate, and, and I've been, I've been on the receiving end of some feedback on it, but, you know, we, we spent a substantial amount of money on a sports complex. I'm not talking about a sports complex, it's a multi-field complex because those fields were designed to be baseball and soccer fields. Um, quite a few people didn't want the golf course and wanted to build them elsewhere. And, um, we actually have been in contact with the Hodges on some other projects, and they turned, they turned us down because even though the Hodges own three hundred acres, they're not desperate to subdivide it for anybody. Um, but when we came with a proposal to, um, put the sports field on twenty-five acres of land we require from them, um, it seemed like a win-win in talking to Coen County, distinctly Fayetteville, and for what we're trying to do for economic development. Um, it helps us out in two ways. One, it is highly visible from I-95. Um, two, um, National Parks and Recreation Center say we should have a regional park in that area because we're expanding. We don't. So, um, more than just sports complex, this, this will be a park which will serve the Graves Creek area and all that development. So, um, what we've done thus far, um, we've done a letter of engagement where we asked the family. Well, first of all, they're willing to sell the twenty-five acres. Like I said before, they told me no twice before, but we can't get the whole, that we need a place for a sports complex. We'll be willing to name it after the patriarch of the family and pay homage. They're all for it. Um, so the, the next step in this whole process is, um, the due diligence phase, meaning we need to do, um, you go to the next slide, Chad. Um, this right here shows the three hundred acres off of I-95 that the Hodges own. Um, the engineers have selected the best twenty-five acres to do the, the, um, the multipurpose field complex. If you go to the next slide. So, I want to get direction from the, the board for two things. Um, one is to amend the master plan to show the multipurpose complex on this property. And then, two, um, permission to move forward with due diligence, meaning do a site appraisal and a topographical and boundary survey of the site. Both things of which we've already gotten permission from the family to do. We just need permission to spend the money and permission to vote again. Um, so, um, once we, once we've done the appraisal, it'll give us a dollar amount of how much the, the twenty-five acres is worth, and then we'll come back to see if it's the town's pleasure to purchase the twenty-five acres.
Yeah, I'm just going to, I want to package this up the correct way. The motion would be to, uh, to approve the site appraisal at eight thousand, and then the topographical and boundary survey at twelve thousand. That would be the motion to, uh, to approve. For a total of twenty thousand dollars. If we have available funding, right, Chad?
Well, and you can sum up the interest we've received on the ARPA fund.
Okay.
It'd be a perfect, and I have to have a budget, a budget amendment for each of them. Let's want to add it on the twenty-five.
Sure.
I do say...
You're going to get a shoe coming across your face.
You say anything else, I'm fine. Do tonight.
You have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries, you got it, Lamarcus.
The other piece is to amend the master plan to show the, the sports, the, the multipurpose field complex on the Hodges property. And so basically what you'll get when, when C, when, when C.H.A. comes back with the final master plan, you'll see one site that'll have the pickleball complex, the community center, and the parking, um, and all the service related for that. But then you'll also have a master plan that will show the design. Essentially, they've taken the design and superimposed on the site, we know it fit. But you'll see another master plan that they'll have to, um, will have to get approved by you all. So you'll get two master plans, one with the community center and the other with the sports complex showing this site.
Who's going to do the master plan?
Same company.
Same company that we, that we're involved in right now?
Yes. No.
No.
That's going to be at the golf course.
No. Multi, multi, uh, multifunctional sports complex.
Do you need a motion to amend the, um, master plan?
Second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, you got both of them.
Thank you.
Well, that concludes, uh, your presentation, Lamarcus.
It does, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Lamarcus before we move on to... Oh, he's here. Yeah, the guy over there with the tie.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Lamarcus.
Thank you.
All right, chief. I think you're, uh, are you the last? No, you're last, but you're close. Yeah, Drew Brown. It was all yours. I even brought you a big book.
You brought you a big book?
I brought you a big book. We brought you a big book.
Um, so, we, we really just have, uh, four, uh, four main priorities, um, that would impact the budget. Um, the other one that we might add a little, two, would be the, our training budget. Being that we have those additional SROs and the constant officers, you'll have to train them obviously, uh, provide training, but I think that's negligible. I think we can probably work that out with, with just within our budget. But the, the four, um, main things we have are, um, and I'll start off, uh, with the first one, Substation. And I, I just want to clarify, uh, that because I think the verbage is confusing. I don't think that the Hope Mills Police Department will ever be in a position to have to have substations where they're sending patrol officers out. I, I don't, I don't see that being an, uh, when I say patrol officers, I'm talking about the squads of patrol officers that, that, that work, work around the clock. I don't ever see us needing, unless there's some drastic change in the town geographically, like Fayetteville, obviously, they're, you know, fifty square miles of wherever they are. So that obviously they have to have, uh, and they also have a certain number of officers so that they can, they can turn patrol squads out of each of their substations. We, I don't ever see that being an issue for the Hope Mills Police Department unless there's some drastic annexation of, you know, ten thousand people. I, I don't see that, even with the predicted growth. What we need is just space. So if the word is substation, or satellite, or annex, or whatever, we just need space. And one building will do, um, as, as long as it's, you know, big enough to accommodate the, the people. Uh, and what we would do is we'd move certain units out of this main facility and push them to that, that other facility. So really, it's just office space. Now ideally, you don't wanna do it right here next to the P D, because it does have some benefits in reducing response time. So for argument's sake, if there's another section of town, um, although there'll be certain units, and patrol officers wouldn't be briefed and, and turned out from that, that satellite, uh, station if you would, it would still be accessible with patrol. So if an officer has to do a report, or, or, um, use their computers, or process evidence, they wouldn't have to come all the way back here to police headquarters, come way out of their patrol, their assigned patrol area to do that. They can just go right through that, that complex and take care of it. But it would also have officers there whose primary, primary duties would not be patrol. But if an incident did come in, then they, they could respond expeditiously. But we will, I don't forecast ever seeing us having to have, like the fire department, um, substations where they're actually turning, uh, squads out of it, if you would. We just need one building for space because we're, we're, we're at full capacity and, and, uh, we're, we're busting at the seams, and I've already outrun, uh, like our evidence facility and the female locker room and stuff like that. So I just wanna be clear on that. Um, I know we just discussed this at the last town meeting, so I'll, I'll just blow through it, um, because I, I don't wanna be redundant. But, um, the female locker room's too small, as we discussed, the parking lot is, uh, is, is too small. Our evidence facility is that capacity. Um, we, we are struggling to find spot, uh, space for our evidence. Um, but the hiring of the SROs and the crime scene unit officers, um, they don't have any workspace, uh, those officers. Um, we had to order some cubicles and, and retrofit them into the, the current space here, turn in front of windows and, and such. Uh, we had to dismantle some other workspace in order to fit them. Um, and the, any new building pool that we, we do obtain will also have the ability to, we'll make sure of it, and this would not impact the purchase of the building or, or any such thing. Will also have the ability to serve as an, uh, uh, an off-site E O C if need be. When I understand, during the hurricanes, with the flooding, and I wasn't here, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but certain sections of town were cut off, uh, from, from officers. So this would have the ability to be able to, to function in that capacity if, if need be, um, for, for whatever, um, whatever, uh, weather event or something that we needed. Uh, and so unlike the fire department, we don't have the ability to contract with other agencies, or we do not also have the closest dispatch, uh, protocol where we dispatch another town or another city to answer a call after closest to it. So, um, but like I said, I just wanna be clear, we, 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 we're, I don't ever see us needing substations where we're turning patrol officers out. So that, that's a good, and we just need one building that's capable of, um, holding some officers that we need space for now. And then if we add additional officers, which we're gonna have to, to accommodate some, some more officers, and that facility will be accessible to, to patrol. But, uh, I can move on from that. The dead horse. Um, so the next, uh, the next thing is additional officers. Um, since, since I got here in two thousand and twenty-two, one of the first things I did is a manpower study. Uh, and I made recommendations on how many officers we should hire each year to keep up with the anticipated growth, um, both residentially as well as commercially. And I think it's important to note too that we're also just not planning for the people that actually live here, or the stores that are being built here. Um, we have to plan on the amount of people that are, um, patronizing those stores and, and are coming to town. And we're also situated, uh, next to the sixth largest city in North Carolina, uh, Fayetteville, obviously. So a lot of the issues that they're dealing with there spill over here, and we're forced to deal with, deal with that as well. Um, we've had significant increase in call volume just taking over the responsibilities at the school. Uh, I think a much strategic plan, we had answered, well over three hundred calls already, uh, three hundred incidents at the school since, taken over, since school started on August twenty-sixth. And I think that was, uh, the estimate, that was the numbers, um, based in December. I mean, I'm sorry, it's in November, so we have another month and a half to add to that. So I'm sure we'll probably close to five hundred incidents, uh, as, as we speak. Um, we are, uh, one of the things I'd like to do, and I, and I gave you in that, in that plan, um, twenty-one officers would be needed over the next few years. Um, one of the things I'd like to do sooner than later is to open our building twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Cause right now it closes at five P M. So if anybody comes, uh, you know, God forbid, they're in a domestic violence situation, or somebody's looking for the police, they, they think they found a, a safe haven, and then they run into the front door there, and there's a phone that says, "Call for the police." And then they're calling the county, and then an officer is being dispatched, and they can be coming from the other side of town. So I'd like to open that, this building up twenty-four seven and, and staff it with, with, uh, with the ship commander. This way, when somebody walks into that building, there's a police officer there, um, that can address their immediate concerns. The other thing it does is it gives our residents the opportunity to come here. Whereas if they need a copy of the report or something right now, they have to get here before they close, close the business. And a lot of people work and don't have that ability to do. So, um, this would enable them to come at seven or eight o'clock at night, get a copy of the report, and then if you see the ship commander, he can, he can pull up the report and he can, he can, he can get in the car. Um, go ahead, Chief, any questions?
One of the number one things that we hear, and we're hearing this more and more and more, is our police department closes after five P M. We are a growing community. And now that we have taken on the SRO function during the day and, you like this one, and after-school activities, we've amped up again. We're no longer a small town. We're not. This is something that I think we really have to look at, and we have to look at this and make some tough decisions on how to open up this building twenty-four seven. I think that, that, that the safety of our community is looking for that. Because look at the amount of crime that goes on after five. And then look at what residents have to do if they have an incident, where do they go? They come in the lobby, they get a phone. That, that's, that's what we have in place right now. They come in the lobby, and there's a phone. Not a, not a lieutenant, not a sergeant, not a sworn police officer. But a phone. We're better than that. We are. Chief, continue. So wait a minute, Commissioner Marley, do you have something? Can we raise the heat?
Yeah, raise the heat in here for a cold. They may ask.
I concur.
Just that mean that there will be somebody twenty-four seven, seven days a week that will actually answer the phone.
No, no, and they'll be an answer body.
No, that will answer the phone if somebody calls them, say, a political.
Oh.
Somebody on the desk, if, if.
Well, they don't ever call here. When they, when they call, the, the way it's set up here, when the town decided to give up dispatch years ago, um, they call nine-one-one and it goes to Cumberland County, and then they dispatch our officers. Um, and that, that will continue. I mean, we don't have, it would be an astronomical cost to bring back dispatch to Hope Mills to, to provide that service on our own. Plus, you would need a facility to do it. It would, your cost would be millions of dollars just to bring back dispatch. And at this point, I wouldn't, I, I don't, I don't think that's necessary.
Yeah, I didn't know that if there was going to be people here, if they could, the phone rang, they could pick it up and talk to someone or you, they would still answer.
They can call a non-emergency number, obviously, if they have a non-emergency call. But it's not like they're calling here to get a police response, and then we're gonna dispatch with you. That, that, that would not change now. So I'll, I'll just continue on, on that at the end of it. So what my goal would be is our records, our records window here is when you walk into the, to the lobby, and you see the two glass windows there, staffed during the day by our records personnel. Behind that is another room connected to that. And it's, it has rolling shelves where they used to store records. One of our, uh, one of our goals was to digitize and to get rid of paper records. So we, we were able to accomplish that, and everything has been, um, digitized now in searchable form. So those, we, we don't use those shelves. So I could either give them to another town, the corpsman's that needs them, or whatever. Um, or, or if we did get another building, maybe put them there. But I would take those shelves out, and that opens up the area where Lieutenant would stay, um, each shift, where Lieutenant would be assigned there. We would also have the ability, and I know Lamarcus and I have discussed, uh, increasing the town's, uh, camera capabilities, uh, the stationary cameras, um, and our real-time crime center cameras, Q C S, which are, we're, we're in the process of giving to schools. So they'll have screens there where the lieutenant will actually be able to watch those while, while they're working. So right now, the cameras at the parks per se, you know, they're great, but all they're doing is they're actually just capturing the crime being committed. And hopefully it's something we can use to, to identify suspects, and we've been very, um, very good at doing that. But this will be live footage where now if we see somebody start after hours, our, our lieutenant can get on, and the officer in charge can get on the radio and send a patrol over there, a patrol officer over there right away. And I know Lamarcus and I have discussed increasing our camera capabilities, especially at town facilities. So that would be one of the benefits of having, having that, that now. Um, cause right now we have no officers in the building after hours. Um, the, uh, some of the additional officers, so that, that would provide for a lieutenant on every squad. Right now we have two lieutenants that, that both supervise, um, two squads. So there's a, um, fifty percent of the time, there's no lieutenant working. It's just a sergeant and the officers on the road. And the sergeant's job is to be a first-line supervisor to make sure officers are doing things like their reports and stuff like that. They don't have the ability, and they can't command level decisions. And a lieutenant would be the station house commander, to, to build them open twenty-four seven and has, and in essence, runs the department after hours. Obviously, if there's a situation, we come from home, but they, they're, they're, they're running, they're running things after hours. Um, the other, um, there's a lot of services that we are not providing that I would like to provide to the town, and which requires additional officers. So I'd like to be able, so a resident or a business can call us and say, "Hey, can you send somebody over to do a survey to show us how to harden our, our, our facility from being, you know, from being a victim of crime?" So an officer would go to somebody's house and make recommendations like, trim your hedges down below the ground floor windows, because somebody could hide behind them, and they can get in your window and, 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 and break into your home. Put a, put a bar in your sliding glass doors, add additional lighting. And this is a service that a lot of agencies provide, and it's excellent for the community. It's free of charge, the officers are trained to make those assessments, they go there and they make recommendations to businesses and homeowners on how to make their, 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 uh, property, you know, um, hardened, so that they're not the easy victims of crime. There's some other community programs, I think, are beneficial. I'd love to do a citizen police academy. Um, Fayetteville does a lot of, a lot of, a lot of police to do it. A, uh, youth police week, um, in New Jersey, where I came from, we started off with one week. And it's, uh, the kids come, and they actually, it's like they're in a police academy, and there's officers that take them through the paces. It grew soup so much that they had expanded six weeks, because they had hundreds of kids who did it, and they'd go a week at a time. And they get to go to the range and shoot paintballs like at targets. And they, they get to go through, uh, you know, police training, how to do motor vehicle stops. And, um, not only is it bridging a gap and doing, you know, great for officers to interact with the community members, but these are all different services that, that I think we should be providing to our community, especially as, as we grow.
You know, Chief, that would really benefit since we, you know, assembled the SRO mission in the schools. It would really, really benefit.
And then the other thing is the, is the police explorer program. Um, and that's for, uh, youth between the age of fourteen and eighteen, where they actually, um, where they actually work alongside, they normally have two meetings a month where officers provide them training, and then they assist at, at town events, like the July fourth fireworks event, they could help park cars and stuff. And it's, it's getting them, uh, familiarized with our police department. They, they get to learn whether or not a career in law enforcement is for them. And then that's, that's future people that wanna, that apply to our agency later on. So it's like a horn team, really, if you think about it, like, you know, the, the major sports, they have horn teams, and they feed them up to be police officers later on. So these are all different things that, that I would love to be able to provide to the community, and I think we should be providing. But obviously, we need to, we need to hire some additional officers. Um, and, uh, after, you know, you'll have to hire for the next few years, you know, a, a significant number. But once you get to that, I don't see any huge increase of having to do that same thing again. You might have to add one or two based on change in circumstances, or, um, you know, if, if they built another school in Hope Mills, and we had to provide another SRO, we might have to hire an SRO. But this would get us to be able to provide professional service that, that we should be providing. There's a lot of things that we're not, we're just unable to do because of manpower. Um, and it would also add an additional officer to each of the patrol squads. Uh, you know, right now it's a sergeant and five officers, but that doesn't account, like, we have people out, we have two or three officers right now that are out on, uh, F M L A because they just had babies. So they're gone for twelve weeks. So that's right away, there's three squads that are short on officers. Um, we have to provide mandatory training, that state mandates that we provide. We'd love to be able to train, additional training, but we're short on the road. So it, it really hampers training, like the fire chief, uh, mentioned. The better training, you know, the less liability, the, the better service you offer. Um, right now, if an officer makes an arrest, due to the, the conditions at the, um, the wait time at the jail, you could be, we had an officer the other, the other day wait ten hours to turn their prison over at the jail. It's ten hours that they're not available with patrol. So we need to bolster an extra officer on each squad, make sure that we have ample coverage, and we're able to provide training. Somebody off sick, somebody out in F M L A, this way we, we don't ever decrease our, our staffing level. So, um, that's all I have in reference to the hiring, talking points on hiring, uh, officers. Anybody have a question for it? And move on to the next topic. No? Uh, next is vehicles. Um, we are finally rid of all of the Crown Vips, which had a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty thousand miles on them.
This is a milestone.
What's that?
This is a milestone.
Yeah, they're in a, they're currently in the Smithsonian, and you can visit them if you'd like. Um, but, uh, they are, uh, we're, we're rid of the Crown Vips. Um, we have.
Matt's got, Matt's got a couple of Vips together.
Yeah.
I don't think that one was Crown Vip.
You are. We have some other vehicles that still have some high mileage. So we're, we're requesting five, and at that point, all of our high mileage vehicles will be, will be, uh, out of, you know, gone, uh, and it will significantly cut down on our repair costs, which have been significant over the last few years. Um, all these new vehicles. Um, all these new vehicles, uh, are currently, uh, they're, they have a warranty. A lot of the work that if something does go wrong the street because they're under warranty and any other, of course, would just, would be minor, so it's really cutting our, our repair costs down. Um, and of course, that's what we need right now. We would be able to get rid of some vehicles if you, we were, uh, if you did approve those extra officers, uh, that, so we can keep the building open and stuff, we'd have to order a couple of extra vehicles as well. But as you know, we don't purchase them. We contract with Enterprise. And, uh, I think we've discussed this before, but they, it's, it's a really good program. Um, they, not only do they, as all the equipment rolled right into the, to the lease price, it's not a traditional lease where, you know, um, we have the option to, to keep the vehicle at the end if we don't want to sell it, but they monitor the vehicles to make recommendations when it's best for us to sell, when it, when it's, uh, the most equity in the vehicle, when it starts getting higher mileage. That equity, once we sell it, they sell it for us, we, it's all hands off. They roll that money right back into the program. They also negotiate deals at repair shops, so our repair costs are less and they monitor fuel leases too, which A keeps officers accountable, but it also lets us know if, if a vehicle is consuming too much, uh, too much fuel, maybe there's a maintenance problem with it. So they monitor the small things and then this way it prevents them from becoming major things, which we know will be more costly. Um, any questions about the vehicle?
Any questions?
Yes.
All right.
And then the only other thing, and, uh, and this is, this is something that it's a recurring cost. I hope to offset this with, uh, asset forfeiture. We are expecting, um, we're starting to get some checks in now. We are expecting, uh, asset forfeiture to offset this, this kind of expense for this next piece of equipment. But we're in need of, uh, it's called Graykey, an Acxiom software and a forensic computer. Um, as I'm sure you can, you can guess, a high percentage of our cases involve a cell phone or a computer. And, uh, in order to extract the data from those devices, it requires these, this software program. Right now, we've been, um, fortunate enough, we're Fayetteville and, and Venus is a public record, uh, public meeting. I, we are very fortunate that the partnership that we have with Fayetteville Police Department. Um, they're, and we help them as well. We send our bonds out there. We're, we're back and forth, but they're very, uh, good to us in things that we don't have, helping us out until we, until we, until we get those things ourselves. But right now, in order to get a phone or a computer, uh, data extracted, we have to either ask Fayetteville or the S B I. And the problem with that is obviously there are cases in, in directly associated with precedent over ours. Um, they have a high volume of cases. Uh, so what could take us a day or two might take six or eight weeks. And that's, that's the whole thing for criminal investigation. A lot of evidence is, is obtained on those devices. This device, these devices allow us to extract their own data, um, off those, off phones and computers. So it's, it's imperative that, that we, we're able to skin the loan here because who knows if the, the volume of their work gets to the point where they're unable to help us anymore, not for lack of wanting to, but just not being able to. So that's the, uh, that's the last item on our list of costs too. It's about sixty thousand dollars a year.
A year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And like I said, I, I'm hoping to, when, uh, asset forfeiture starts rolling in, to off, offset some of that. Um, but.
That's my follow-up question too, is asset forfeiture.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's not, I, I can't guarantee how much it's true. I, I'm predicting that we're going to be able to offset a lot of these costs because I can tell you what we have pending in that system right now. Um, and we're, we're, we have pending a percentage of three million dollars at this point and that's just from this year alone. So as that starts rolling in, we'll be able to up, offset some of these, these expenses. But again, that's not a guarantee that next year we'll have that much, you know, so, but this is, uh, you know, um, these devices, computers and, uh, and, uh, phones. If, if you don't have the password, you have to be able to access them somehow. So we get a search warrant. Once we get the search warrant, these devices give us the, the ability to access them even with that. Okay.
Yeah, how much of a percentage, how much of a percentage do you get on here? That's both.
Yep, uh, so, so there's two different kinds. There's state and there's federal. Um, state, it's, it's actually what they do is they actually tax the amount of illegal narcotics a person has. Uh, and then we get, we get, uh, we get eighty-five percent of the tax value on that. We don't, that's not a significant amount. It sounds, it sounds higher than it is, but all significant cases, we take federal. And federal is based on your participation. So if it's strictly a, I'm sorry, the state is, is, uh, is seventy-five percent, ninety-five, seventy-five percent. Federally, so if it's strictly a Hope Mills case and we take it federal, and that's what's imperative about having our task force officers, which are Hope Mills officers that have been, uh, deputized, if you will, by a federal agency to serve as federal officers. So they have the ability to take those cases federal. Um, and so if it's strictly a Hope Mills case, the federal government gets twenty percent and we get eighty percent. But if it's a joint case where maybe it's us and Fayetteville on spring week, then it, it's based on the, uh, amount of participation your agency has. So if it's all equal, then we get twenty-five percent. If it's not, you know, if we did half the work, then we'd get fifty percent. That's all, that's all determined by the federal government.
I just.
True.
Okay, before we move on?
Gee, has there been an occasion when we leave motorcycles to patrol the streets?
Um, no. I mean, uh, there's, 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 there's two theories behind that, you know, it's, it's, uh, and part of our manpower thing too, those additional officers is to get contracted officers, um, which would handle the, the, uh, the crash reports, be able to investigate serious injury accidents. They would also be trained in traffic engineering, which, uh, I'm glad you, you kind of stressed my memory there. So like, if we're having accidents at a certain intersection, our officers will be trained to go there and try to identify factors that may be contributing to it, like maybe overgrown bushes or something like that. Um, but there's some, motorcycles are good when there's, when there's high, high traffic volume because they're able to get in and out of traffic a lot easier when, when, you know, if, if traffic is backed up, uh, it's more difficult for patrol cars to do it. But it, they also come with a level of danger to do that too, because, you know, in and out of traffic, even when they're, they're careful, um, some people don't see motorcycles as, as, as well as even police cars, as, as you know from, from driving. So I would say, no. Um, the only thing I could see a motorcycle, um, and if we got it for free or got it grant or something, it's very nice ceremonial to lead a parade or to, um, escort a funeral or something like that. But as far as everyday patrol usage, I, I, I don't see a need for it.
Thank you. Okay, Chief, we'll have to add a question.
Okay, Gee. Any further comments, questions? We've got one to go. Thank you, Gee. All right, Drew. Tell us how we don't pay for all this.
Yeah. Okay, as far as the finance department, I'm going to keep this short and sweet and quick.
Yay.
And see how many questions y'all have, but as far as our regular operating budget, um, for next year, we'll have certainly line up a bit higher rates. Often supplies always cost more each year. That'll probably go up a little bit. But the contracts increase each year. That'll probably go up a little bit in finance and then, um, we'll go back and look at our training budget and see if there's any conferences or things we can take advantage of. I always ask my staff, what are they more likely want to, um, take part in for conferences and training? So we'll see if, uh, we can make some additions there if that's needed. But going in order of what I've got on the screen here, bond financing. We've talked about this several times and we've narrowed it down to more than likely instead of doing a, um, general obligation bond referendum in November, we're looking at the possibility of just doing what's called just bond financing or lob financing, which is more just like a regular bank loan that's treated like a bond. You still get the advantages of bond without having to go through all the hoops and the extra cost of doing regular bond financing. So if we were to do that, it also reduces the amount of time that it takes in order to get the money. So if we do the regular bond financing, if this spring, when we get to our budget retreats, we narrow down by that time and we'll have some more meetings between now and then, what projects we specifically want to fund with this. We will have our delegates meet by that time. And maybe there are certain things like community center, we can push for the delegates to pay for, then maybe the other half the heritage park or the tennis courts and pickleball for the, uh, community center project. We'll fund that part and maybe we can get them to do the building. But we'll have to narrow down specifically and exactly what parks and rail projects and what street projects do we want to finance with the bond financing. Without doing the referendum, or if we were to do it the referendum way, it would be voted on in November. We won't receive the money for probably between March through June of the next year. We do regular, um, financing for this, like we're recommending now. We can have the money as early as August of two thousand twenty-five and speed up getting some of these projects done because the money would be available a lot earlier. Now, if we were to say, say we don't have it nailed down what projects we want in March or at that meeting, that's okay. It just pushes the spackle much. Say we finalize them in April. That's all right. Is that getting money in August? We're getting money in September. We set our schedule based on when we want to determine the certain things that we have to do in order to get the, the loan. So just know, the longer it takes us to figure out what we want to finance, it pushes the process back that much. So if we say we have to wait for the delegates to tell us, yes, we will fund this, yes, we will fund that, before we decide what we're going through the bond funding, that's okay, but it does push back the timeframe. Um, waiting on that. So the earliest, if we hit all of our marks, we could potentially have money in August of two thousand twenty-five, less than a year from now, to start some of these projects. Um, the other thing with the bonds was we had our, um, what's it called? Our debt capacity and affordability updated. So we met with, um, that call came here from Davenport, met with, um, Chancellor, the mayor, and I believe Ken Wanneryu on the phone or on the screen. And he gave us some updated figures depending on how much we think we want to borrow. If we were to borrow ten million dollars, that kind of is the equivalent of three point one-two cents of tax in order to pay, if we were to pay the whole ten million from a tax increase. If we were to borrow fifteen million, it would be five point eight-three cents of a tax increase that would cover that debt. And this is, that'd be fifteen million for twenty years at five percent is the scenario we're using here. And if we were to borrow twenty million dollars, it'd be eight point five-six cents of that. Now, that's at our current tax rate and tax value. So our next thing here is profit tax rebound. As you know, this is a game changer. We can have a rebound here. The last one game changed us the negative way because it was a reduction in profit tax eight years ago. This year it's not going to be so. It is going to go up and it's going to be the county says significant an increase in the value. They will have me some numbers probably the first week of February. I was hoping it would be more along this time so I could bring that up to you now, but I've talked to them again today. They said more than likely the first week of February. Because then we'll know what the new values are. So in thinking how we wanted to do the rebound, we're going to have to have another meeting once we get those numbers. And we'll need to determine what things, just like this loans, do we want this rebound paid for? We're in discussions about the sales tax. One of the first things the county called us is if you need to make up for the sales tax number, you need to do that with your rebound. We'll have to consider that. We'll have to consider this bond money. We'll have to consider all these operational things that each department has talked about. Projects, we're looking at grants. We're looking at funding from other sources, those sorts of things. But our day-to-day operational costs will need to come from possibly tax increase or some other revenue source. Uh, but a grant uses a paper project. Um, the state funds that we get are usually projects and project related things. The, um, drug funds that we get are usually capital items that go towards the police department, not day-to-day operational type things. So we're going to have to determine what services and what operations this town wants to increase when we're talking about the, the rebound or profit tax. So there'll be a lot of things. So it's not something I need to really spend a lot of time on now because we don't know what the numbers are. So we could talk hypotheticals, but that could be completely different once we get the numbers. So as soon as we get those numbers in February, we'll be setting up time to, um, have a meeting and discuss, okay, what things do we want this covered and how does that translate to a sense of profit tax? Right now, before the rebound, one cent is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, as we are right now. I ran some hypotheticals and I got to the potential of one cent being a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. But I thought, there's no sense in really going through those numbers because it may not even be close to that. If you hire it, if you lower it, you don't know at this point. So any questions on the bond financing or profit tax?
Go ahead.
It kind of goes together a little bit.
Now, with the bond financing, can we, like, if we want to purchase the fire trucks and stuff like that, can we use that?
I would not use bond financing for that.
No.
That would be something we'd just do a regular run like we did with the other side.
Okay.
Uh, what we've done in the past was a ten-year loan, uh, for the fire trucks. And it was supposed to be, the way we could set it up and what that schedule showed is when there was two sets of loans that ran five years apart. So when the first loan was five years in, we start the second one. And when that one's five years in, then we start, the other one's paid off and then we start another one. So you have two ten-year loans running five years apart and then the cycle of fire trucks just goes with it. Um, but now, that was also, back then, a fire truck was about a year, year and a half in order to construct. Now it might be three, three and a half years in order to construct. So we do need to possibly get some input from y'all. Should we, since it takes three and a half years to order a, for a fire truck to be built, go ahead and let the chief know if we order a truck this spring. So we'll have it by July of twenty-eighth.
Okay.
And then the first debt payment would be July of twenty-ninth.
So we would have to say for the board of the future, watch this video and you're going to have eight or nine decisions.
I mean, you have to order a truck that much in advance. So if he needs it now and he's going to take three and a half years to get it, that's, we're just going to have to wait three and a half years to get it. So, um, that's one thing we need to consider and it's not that y'all have to approve that as just one. You would have to approve the financing. You would just have to say, all right, we're in agreement that he can go ahead and start the process to get some quotes of what's going to take, what's the truck going to cost, and then we can bring it back to you.
Drew, in the financing fees, if we were to look at that, do you think it would be the possibility that we could get the same payment plan like we did with the radios? The first payment would be a year later?
All payments are like that, yeah.
Want to make sure.
All finances are like that.
Yeah.
So that's what I said. If we order it now,
Yeah.
we get the truck in July of twenty-eighth, the first payment is July of twenty-ninth. But I would say we want to receive the truck in July. Is that, that's the first month of another year. That buys us another year. If you get the truck in May or June, then it's that very next month. So.
Let's, uh, I might as well board this. Let's look at something at the retreat.
Okay.
Let's, let's package up something. You might have some time between now and, and March retreat.
Right, and pretty much now we would just need consensus to go forward, get some prices, what's the timeframe? And then it will be up to the board to approve that.
Well, that's what I was going to ask the board. Do we get consensus is to go ahead, get some pricing, let's look at some timelines and bring that, and bring those proposals to the retreat.
All right. Now that question's going.
All right.
Any other questions on the bond financing or profit tax?
I just have one. Now, on the bond finance, if we do a bond referendum, how would we pay that back? Would that be increasing taxes for the next few years?
That'd be the same thing as this type of bond.
Okay.
All the referendum does is it's citizen input voting whether to do it or not.
Okay. What was that first figure for ten million? You said three point?
Oh, three point one two cents.
Okay.
Would cover ten million dollars.
And fifteen was five point eight three, and twenty was eight point five six.
Yes. And those are estimates as well. And after the rebound, like I said, the rebound's a game changer. Those numbers could be low, because one cent a tax, that's at one cent a tax is a hundred thirty-nine thousand for those of them. If, after the rebound, for instance, what I came up with today was, one cent a tax is a hundred eighty-five thousand, those cents go low, because one penny gives us more money.
There's two options on bonds, on the bond fees. There's the option of referendum, which will be on the November ballot, but that delays the funding of when we can actually get.
And it's a lot more work.
And it's a lot more work, and it's costly. Or, the other option, which is board approval, and we move forward from there. And we get savings, less cost, less time, and the money is quicker to, uh, facilitate the budget.
Right. We're still looking at parks and rail and streets, is what we're gonna do with this one.
Parks and rail and infrastructure.
And if the, what the board goes to present tonight are best top priorities, those were the type of things that need to look at funding.
We have to play those.
Not, not, but at some point. Yeah, um.
It's gonna have to be off in the mix.
Pretty much after the March retreat,
Yes.
is where I would like to have one of two things. What project, and this is the direction we want to go.
Because we'll have the rebound numbers at the retreat.
Yeah.
And so that'll be the.
And I can get into better.
Yeah, and that, that'll be where, where we'll discuss this later.
I was hoping to have those proposed tonight, but they don't have, the county doesn't have any.
Anything else before we move on to, uh, CIP? Okay?
Okay. CIP. And I hope y'all remember, last year we renamed it, the Community Investment Plan. It just sounds like more buy-in from the, the, the town. I like it a lot better. I hope y'all do. So, think about it. Hope Mills twenty thirty. That's what this CP will go for, CIP will go for, two thousand twenty-five to two thousand thirty. We need to think, what do we want our town to be in two thousand thirty? What projects do we want to try to complete between now and then? I'd be able to do all of them, because it's kind of a wish list, it's kind of, you know, our Christmas list of all the different things that we want to do, because it helps with grants, if one of their first questions is, is this project in your CIP? Yes, it is. We know that it's not gonna happen in the next five years, unless we get funding, but it's in our, in our book. So, I've made a list of all the different things tonight. We'll be getting with the departments during the month of February, so that at the March retreat, we'll have the twenty-five community investment plan completed. But as far as the council, what do you want twenty thirty to look like for Hope Mills in the next five years? Do you see what we've done in one year? What can we do in the next five? Is what this CIP is gonna have in it.
I hope I'm working up every day.
Hopefully for the next five years.
There you go.
So, um, to me, this is a, this is an important CIP, and what we're gonna have in it. So if there are certain things that the council wants to see in this, that might not order to be in there, go through last year's, look at it. Uh, all the stuff that we brought up tonight, we're gonna add to it. Um, I'm gonna get each, with each department head and February, any other things that they come up with. But what are some things that you want to see in the CIP that's currently not in here, that we can say, hey, we want to look at this between now and two thousand thirty?
Everybody has copyright. Wanna make sure about that.
It is online if you don't have it.
It's online as well. When does, what do you need that, uh, that feedback?
Um, I would probably need it by the first week of February, because that takes the month of February to put it all together and make it work. And then, as you know, somebody's gonna think of something in the middle of February, and I'm gonna have to make some changes.
Well, there's a.
I try to get it as current as possible by the time that, and then usually by the time I get it, see it changes the, the next day.
First week of February, is that good for everybody?
Actually, the, uh, first meeting?
Yeah, we can do it there.
If you have something, just bring it to the first meeting of February. We don't have to have an agenda item, but just have it through the, maybe emailed or something, pop the cancer and actually on your emails, and things that you would like to see in it, so that we can try and get.
I would, I'll, I'll get you on my back. I would like to include feedback from the community. And, and if it's something that they would like to see, that it's also, would you send an email?
I would say maybe you give you that information, and then you get it to us. Just if we just open it up to community, like text.
Because, I mean, we have a website, Engage Hope Mills, so, I mean, we could use it as a platform, very captured. But this, a lot of, a lot of our citizens, they probably don't even know where the CIP is located on the website. And they may have great suggestions that we just don't, we don't see.
Right. But it's big ticket items.
Yeah. Yeah, it's big stuff.
Yeah.
Lamarcus?
Only thing I wanna add is, um, an approved CIP is required for part two, and I need that by May, so, um, Jewish Sherman is gonna be voted on right in March. I just want to let you all know that, um, Harris Park needs to be in that, and, and, um, our commitment to match our force of, is required for part two grant. I know, the grant writer was, um, concerned that we weren't gonna have that, but, you know.
Oh, we will.
And what we do with the thing, we don't have y'all.
We will.
Approve this, like, according to this, like, the budget, because then if we were to change it, it's a budget amendment, just like we do with the annual budget. I don't wanna have to take it to that extreme, so we just have y'all accept it as presented, instead of approving it with the court. Which counts for what Lamarcus.
Yeah. Because he's gonna, because Lamarcus, you're gonna be submitting that part of that, what, May?
When's, when's you submit it, Dan?
Well, the first review is March, and then the final submission is May.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, the review is actually, um, it's a courtesy.
Yeah. Yeah, but, but the final, the final will go in May.
All right. I see Harris Park Phase Two is in here, and it is at that amount that he has, the one point seven seven three. So, um, we'll just update it, um, probably put that map in it, if we don't have that one in there, so.
Yeah.
That would go in there.
Last time.
Questions on the CIP?
Anything else? Last time.
All right. Ashley is sorry she could not be here today. She had a death in the family. She called me this morning. Her aunt died, um, yesterday. And, um, they were very close. So it was, uh, I could tell she was not her normal self, but we were talking on the phone. But nevertheless, she wanted to be here, and so I got some notes from her that she would have brought up. The first thing we need to do is start a visioning session with the town council. And we are gonna need some dates, and if we wanna try to do that tonight, or if we could get some consensus, um, this week, because she would like to start as soon as possible. Meaning, she would like to start next week or the week after that. Week of the twentieth, or the week of the twenty-seventh. And what she needs is a meeting, a vis- visioning session with the council for about two and a half hours, when y'all are available. So think about that for a second. The second thing she needs is a visioning session with staff for about two and a half hours. And she would do that, um, within the next couple of weeks as well. She would like to do the council first, what's that scheduled, have on with the staff, and the same day that she's doing it with the staff, we're, we're, we were going to do the town tour today before this meeting, but we would do the town tour and possibly start the one-on-one meetings with the council. Just gonna vision session with y'all as a group, and then meet with y'all individually a little bit later. And then the third thing, and I sent her Parks and Recs in an email out today with some spring events coming, she wants to do the, start planning the community engagement process. So any town event that's happened between now and the next few months, figure out how to engage the community, get some of their input. But the main thing for y'all right now is to come up with, when would be a good time for two and a half hours with the council for a visioning session?
Can we do that before board meeting?
We could do it, uh, you know, if we had to, we could look at January twenty-first before that meeting. I'll know if this is too close to that date, and get a notice out, or.
February.
We could say, hey, let's do it before the February meeting.
Yeah, that's.
She wants to start as soon as possible, but if that's assuming we can do it, as soon as we can do it.
That's, um, that's just still working out.
With that, February third?
That's it. Did we, did we meet with her prior to, uh, February third board meeting? Say.
Four to six thirty? We'd be here. It'd have to be four, that'd be the two and a half hours, and then the thirty-minute break between then and leaving.
Okay.
Want to try for that?
What's the consensus of the board? Four?
February seventh.
February third or four? Everybody good? Okay, Ashley.
She may be watching us, so.
She may be.
I told her to pull up YouTube. Okay, the other thing then would be, and we can schedule this, is the visioning with staff, and I'll get with her and say, if we do the council on February third, um, what does her schedule look like, um, after that? And then we'll pick out a few days, and then we get back to you and say, okay, these are the days that she's available for staff, and to start the one-on-ones, and see if that works with your schedule. Talk about it.
Now, this would really be good, an opportunity to, to wrap this up for, to the retreat.
That's what I have planned.
Yeah. I, I really, again, we need to really kind of strive to do that.
But the strategic plan, y'all asked to do this, um, Ashley's been waiting to do this since several years. Um, I'm glad we're finally getting to it myself, so we can get this. I think it'll be key to the town, and another thing, once it's finished, then I've seen another town use theirs to extend that every attend item that's presented to the board ties into one of the strategic plan identifiers. And how does this, what, what's the town approving, that helps go towards our strategic plan?
Total mapping, yeah.
So, unless y'all have any other questions about that, that's all I have. Did I not even have the? I talked to you.
It, it might have died, it has a short lifespan.
A battery life.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Um, I just wanna take this time to commend our staff. Um, they do a hell of a job for the town. Um, I want to highlight a few things, because I don't think you can realize how often they insist each other. Um, when Beth is talking about her stone watch fund, she's specifically talking about public works in Lamarcus Department, and how she connects with, for their projects, in a way that does not take out a deal of funding. Um, when you're hearing about it, I'm gonna say, I don't even know, she probably watches the player how it did pass a level one building, spec, um, Specters Test. And I gotta give kudos to Kenny, because his department, Cross Strings Eye, Coach, because a lot of things people don't see that we do. And, and I just wanna take this time to thank our staff, um, with this presentation. Even though it's sixty-one slides, I didn't get one ounce of resistance. Sent out an email, I think I maybe sent out one email, and I got everything I needed, um, from our staff in record time. And so, I want public, and I want our board to know the level of dedication that our department has, and our staff provides. And I want to say thank you, um, for providing us with the ability to provide this information to you guys, so you guys can actually make the tough decisions that you do. I think.
Thank you, Chancellor. In all the years that I've served on this board, I think this year is the closest that I have seen the cohesion between all the staff and the department heads there in this room. And I will extend that to this board as well. It's very, it's been a very productive year, and the direction that we changed, and we went in this time last year. And the headwinds we were faced with this time last year, and we weathered through. And we've done some phenomenal things in here. We truly, truly have. Is there some, some veins that we probably could have done a little better? Yep. Did we learn from them? You better believe we did. But I think it's those lessons that, that makes us stronger, and it's the trust that we have with each other in this room that, to me, I didn't have this trust when I was, uh, uh, commissioner on board. I just, I didn't feel it that way, because everything was, was in a different, was in a back end or, or behind curtains, or. But here we are, we're open and transparent with each other in this room. And that's a testament to the, to the dedication of each of you, serving the town and serving the citizens. If you look at that, that slide up there, and that's why this is the last one, that's where the hard decisions are gonna be made, is on that slide. Because we've got a lot of heavy stuff here that we need to look at funding. Because we've got a growing community. We've got equipment, we've got expansion, we've got growth, we've got something Gee wants to do with twenty-four-seven operations. We've got a park to tax rebound coming. But we've got to be smart on what we fund and how we fund it. And that's the only thing that I really wanted to share. And I think we can do that. In fact, I know we can do that, because we've been doing it collaboratively all year. Any other comments from the board? I'm set enough. You? Anything? No? 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 All right. Thanks, everybody. We're adjourned.